Good afternoon. Welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have a moment of silence as our invocation and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Welcome to our June 16th Board of Commissioners business meeting. Our first order of business will be roll call followed by the adoption of the agenda.
All right, Commissioner Sana Gregory.
I am here Chairman.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
Present.
Commissioner Damont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
Madam Clerk, all Commissioners are present.
Next we will have adoption of the agenda. Any Commissioners have any amendments?
There are any amendments, fire into the Commissioners.
What was that question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Amendments to the agenda.
Yes, I do.
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to take out 14 from the consent agenda and also number 31.
Okay, are you wanting to place it on the regular agenda or just take it off altogether?
Place it on the regular.
All right, so the motion is to remove item 14, which is proposed pay structure for superior and state court law clerks. And item 31, Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, 31.
We're taking them off and putting them on the regular agenda. 31 is Resolution 2020-105, a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into articles of agreement with community charitable organizations. Is there a motion to remove these two from agenda and place on regular agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, prompt to move and second, those favor eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Any others?
Are there any other amendments?
All right, here and done, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
That was a motion by Commissioner Warner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Here and done, those a favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Next we will have a proclamation for sickle cell awareness, Commissioner Warner.
I'm on my way.
1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. Dating back to 1865, it was on June 19th that the Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with the news the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. So it's only befitting that today I have an opportunity to read a proclamation. A proclamation that states, Clayton County Board of Commissioners proclaim Sickel Cell Awareness Day, June 19th, 2020, whereas the health and safety of all Clayton County residents is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our counties, families, and communities. And whereas sickle cell disease is the most common blood disorder in the United States, and I may add among African Americans, affecting approximately 100,000 Americans, occurring in one out of every 365 African American births, and one out of every 16,300 Hispanic American births. And whereas sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that affects the hemoglobin, the molecule in red blood cells that delivers oxygen to cells throughout the body. And whereas according to the American Heart Association and hematology, approximately 3.0 million Americans carry the sickle cell trait. And whereas early identification of a child with sickle cell disease coupled with antibiotic prophylaxis by three months of age and early intervention services helps those with sickle cell disease while researchers continue to search for a universal cure. And whereas Clayton County remains dedicated to the provisions of sickle cell screening, education, and medical care for individuals and families living with sickle cell disease through its support of the Georgia Department of Public Health's Newborn Screening Program and the MTS Sickel Cell Foundation. And therefore, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join us on this day to proclaim June 19th, which is also celebrated as Juneteenth, Sickel Cell Awareness Day in Clayton County, Georgia. Thank you so much for what you're doing for our community. (applause) And it's been stated that Clayton County has a lot of single mothers. Yes, we do. But at the end of the day, we continue to excel. And I want to commend my fellow, who is a single mother of three children with sickle cell. But yet it still, she gets up every day, builds a business, and always represents not only them but our community well. Remember, we can make the future for ourselves as a community. So I wanted to say thank you. (applause)
This means a lot to me. I want to thank you to Commissioner Warner and the rest of the Board of Commissioners. As stated, this is a condition that affects about 100,000 Americans in this country, but it is very much a global health issue. And so it's always heartwarming because this is a very personal disease for me. This is a personal mission. It's always heartwarming that home has that's what you do. I travel all over this country to bring awareness to whoever would listen to sickle cell disease. And it just means so much to me that home is receptive. So thank you so much for this. Thank you to the whole county because this is an initiative to educate everybody. And it is important that all of us, especially people of African descent, know our sickle cell status. It's very important.
And Be The Match. Be The Match.
Yes. Be The Match is a registry that you can sign onto to see if you are a match for someone who may need you to cure them of sickle cell disease. So if you can look into that, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since both proclamations were done at one time, next we will have our branding phase three presentation.
It is my privilege to stand before you tonight to offer to you the proposed logo for our Clayton County branding initiative, one that you set out to have under the communications and image pillar. We've gone through a very thorough process. We are in phase three as an update to where we are today, to you and to the public. Tonight, you should have in front of you the insights and branding research, which includes the SWOT competitive analysis and the community survey, as well as the Brand Launch and Implementation Comprehensive Plan and the Brand Standards Book that is proposed. At this time, I would like to introduce Linda Mosley and Heath Slapikis, who is working with me in consultation through Total Marketing 365, in order to present the proposed logo.
We are excited to be here tonight at the conclusion of the first three phases of this branding process. We want to thank Commissioner Turner and the rest of the Commissioners. Y'all have been a huge part of this process. And the citizens of Clayton County. We have had so much participation from all of the citizens that it's been a delight to be a part of this process. This has been a multifaceted process, and I'm going to let Heath Slapikis give a quick summary of the research phase.
Good evening Chairman. I'd just like to reiterate what Linda said and the commitment that y'all made to the research, because the research has really transcends all personal and political opinion and makes sure that the brand and identity of Clayton County will stand the test of time. As part of the research process that we did, multiple facets of different information, we included a competitive analysis for four surrounding counties, Henry, Fulton, DeKalb, and Fayette, as well as over 56 executive interviews with business leaders, strategic partners, all the local leadership. The community involvement was huge. We had over 1,300 online surveys that were filled out where they were able to talk about Clayton County where it is today, Clayton County where it was in the past, and Clayton County where they think it should be and can be in the future. You know, and the research is really critical because in many times assumptions aren't the real reality. And what we found during the research process was that Clayton County is in a really strong position, that they have very competitive from a wage standpoint with the four communities that we, surrounding counties that we looked at, that they've made significant strides positively in the education field, as well as in the crime reduction that came out of that as well, along with over 50 data points, some of which you'll see in the video that we're going to show in just a few minutes. And then I think Linda is going to talk a little bit about how that research was used and implemented into the designing element of things for the new brand as well.
The research was taken and implemented into the actual visual design, the actual verbal messaging that we did for the logo and for the marketing campaign. We found five strong brand pillars in everything that we did, and it was wonderful to watch because everyone from the mayor to the individual citizens of the community all agreed on the five major strengths of Clayton County. Obviously, the proximity to the airport, the proximity to five major highways, or six major highways actually. The people in the community kept coming up because everyone that we spoke to believed in the strength and the unification of the people here in Clayton County, and we saw it. The leadership here is so strong and works well together. The cost of living was huge, and everybody recognizes that fact. We're 6% below the state and national averages and 11% below the next surrounding county that's in the metro Atlanta area. So the cost of living is something to be very proud of. And then the fabulous Parks and Recreation Department here with an emphasis on the senior citizens kept coming up over and over again. So those five strong brand pillars were integrated into the results that we got. You'll see that the psychological profile, this is my background and I love it, you can tell I'll get excited about it, the psychological profile showed our community had six major colors that were within 5% of each other. I've never had that happen before. Usually there's two or three colors that need to be integrated in the final product. This one had six. Then when we looked at the research and we found out that those six colors were reflected in the nationalities that live here in Clayton County, it was a fabulous conclusion that those six colors had to be used in the final results. And you'll see on the video that we actually take the flags of the countries that are represented, the African flags, the Asian flags, and the Latin American flags. And what amazes me is I spent a lot of time looking at all the world flags after we came to this conclusion, the same reds are not used in other country flags, but the three flag areas that are represented in Clayton County use the exact same tones. It almost gives you chill bumps because it really is what we need to integrate into the final results. Right now with the racial tensions, to me it couldn't be better timing because we're able to show the unification and the pride that Clayton County has in representing an international diversity and the fact that we're unified in that. We are literally connected as a Clayton County area with our racial diversity and the international diversity that we have here. So when developing the final taglines, we actually stopped along the way and conducted some perception research. So we sent out the logos, we sent out the marketing campaigns, and we came back with the goals that Clayton County had, to increase the job wages, to increase the younger groups, to increase the jobs for the younger population. And we fed these logos and these marketing campaigns out to those target markets and got them back. And by the time we finished, it was very obvious, again going back to research, it was very obvious that this logo, this marketing campaign, and this tagline represented the goals that we had for Clayton County, that you had for Clayton County, that the citizens had for Clayton County, because everybody agreed on the exact same goals, which is always wonderful to see. So without further ado, we're going to show you the actual video that kind of takes you through the process and then the final results, and you will see that Clayton County is connected and it is a place where the world lands and opportunities take off. Commissioner Turner and the rest of the Commissioners and the community, we're proud to present the logo and the marketing campaign in the conclusion of the first three phases, and we thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. You know, I've definitely got to say that y'all have done a tremendous job. You were very engaged with not only this board, but with the citizens especially. And I think this is definitely a collaboration of all stakeholders in our community. So I really appreciate the work that you have done. At this time, I'd like to ask if any of the Board of Commissioners has any questions?
Have a comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Sana Gregory? One of those slides that was violent crimes, violent was misspelled.
Say that again Commissioner, I'm sorry.
One of the slides, one of the slides had violent crimes on it, when they were kind of flashing their little different tags about violent was misspelled. Just the violent crimes, one of those slides.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions in reference to the logo?
Good work.
So let me ask this, go ahead, I'm sorry Commissioner.
Okay. Excellent work. Definitely thank you for the research that was put into it. I think my comments are really in line with what I've already shared. My only concern is that by using the airplane, it looks as if the county may be receiving or receiving some great benefit from the airport to represent the airport there. I understand the idea that opportunities take off here, that's awesome, but the lead-in is an airplane. So that was my only thought and yeah. And then just with the colors, how would the seal still fit within that? Because the seal is what represents the county from a professional standpoint, as opposed to just a marketing standpoint.
Were you clear on that question? Someone of y'all want to answer that?
Commissioner, can you repeat that question?
The question was, well, the first comment was about the plane. It's great, and I love where the world lands and opportunities take off. That is really nice, but when we put the plane in the middle, it gives the idea of a notion that we have some type of possible control or true benefit from the airport itself. That's one thing. And then, because that's the focal point there, I see the sea, but then that's really the focal point. And then the other question was, how does the seal fit within this considering that that's the official, you know, it's the professional representation of our county outside of the marketing materials?
And I'll take the first one about the airplane. One of the tasks we were given is to represent Clayton County's assets and also to position them for the future. And obviously, the fact that you own the majority of the land for the airport is of huge importance, and it is a recognizable asset, and it positions you globally for any kind of logistics, any kind of transportation assets, any kind of global connection for any business. That is one of your biggest assets. You are right there, you are within 19 minutes at the most of the airport. So you are strategically positioned. It is something to brag about, and honestly, part of the future is positioning you, so perhaps in the future you can have financial gain directly from the airport, but even if you don't have direct financial gain, you certainly have many assets of indirect gain from the positioning of the airport. And I'm going to let Valerie talk to the next.
And so Commissioner, if I heard you correctly, your question was about the county seal.
Yes.
The county seal stands as the county seal. The logo itself, that's not, of course, communications decision. How we use the logo is research-based for the logo for branding of Clayton County altogether. It would be a Board of Commissioners' decision of whether or not to remain with the seal and the new logo, or just the new logo itself.
Does that have to be voted on? Because done this, okay, I got it, but that's awesome. This is awesome work. We can finish that offline, but this is awesome. Awesome energy. I have something, if you all can hear me.
Commissioner Hambrick, go ahead, just speak up a little bit.
Yes. My concern is under where the world lands and opportunities take off, that statement underneath, I have a problem with the, about the low cost of living. If we could use some other terminology?
Like affordable.
I mean, I don't think that's a plus. If we could come up with something else other than low cost of living.
Not a problem.
Moderate cost of living or something, but we've just been known for being in the low range of a lot of things.
I totally understand, and we want to go forward from that. I understand. We can definitely work on that phraseology. That's a good point.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes ma'am.
I also, that, when I mentioned earlier about the word violent being miscorrected, I didn't want to just leave with just one negative, that one just stuck out at me. But as you were going through the presentation, and especially the signs that said welcome to Clayton County, it really was great. And, you know, I would think that somebody would riding through, that would interest them more than just the regular old sign. So, you know, this whole new branding process and what you all have done is really good because I really do believe it will make people think twice about Clayton with this new look and so forth. And I also just wanted to add that to my comments, and I apologize, I didn't just want to throw out one negative and leave it there. Okay, I have one other thing, and maybe my eyes trying to look on this small screen, but there was something mentioned about in the heart of whatever, and I didn't see the, is that H-E-A-R-T or is it H-A-R-T?
It was actually H-A-R-T in reference to Hartsfield, Atlanta.
It was actually H-A-R-T in reference to Hartsfield Atlanta International Airport Commissioner Hamburg, I think, was speaking. And that was one of the top 10 marketing plans that was presented to the board.
Okay.
It's not one that will be used, but it was one of the top 10. And so they were just reflecting through the process as we've gone along and gotten to Phase 3 down to the final logo that's proposed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Were you going to add something to that, Lynn?
No, I just was going to say that it was not the final one that was chosen, but it was one of the catchy slogans that we came up with.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, let me ask this question. Does the Commissioners like the actual logo? If everybody's in agreeance with the logo outside of the verbiage that needs to be corrected for presentation purposes, then, Mr. Ree, correct me, am I able to, just to move things along, to take a vote on the logo for us to move forward with it? Because I know it wasn't an agenda item for a vote. But could I ask for a approval?
You could, but I would like probably some time to take a look at maybe doing it through a resolution and make sure to kind of cover one of the other issues relating to the seal, how you wanted to deal with that. And maybe just do something comprehensive.
Say no more, we'll do it next meeting. That's fine.
And I may clarify my statement real quick about the seal. It's because that's the official seal. And we, in today's time, we have to be very careful of who's representing us. So, but I would tell you, I like the energy. I'm just glad that we went through this process. It taught us a lot about ourselves, so.
All right, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have done some tremendous work.
Thank you.
So it's been a pleasure working with you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Next to board with her public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, before I call out the first name, several of you have signed up to speak on zoning matters. This isn't the time for the zoning matter. So if you, if I call your name and you want to speak in reference to one of the petitions, at the end of the agenda will be the time for you to make those comments. Mr. Alvin Farmer.
Mr. Farmer, Unincorporated Clayton County, proactive community activist, 24-year Air Force veteran, been in harm's way for this country. I will leave this for my Commissioner. Pharaoh had to listen to the Israelites when they was in captivity. You must listen to the people of Clayton County. I personally going to pass that word. On a positive note, I had a lady come from the Water Authority to check some water at my home. She informed me that the headquarters in her office, computers do not talk together, and they have an issue about that. The Chairman of the Martyr was here on the 2nd of June. He said that bus stop will be moved in two weeks. This is the 15th day. I stopped later today. That bus stop has still not been removed. I inform you that coming out of the Aquatic Center, which I've been informed is now open, almost got hit by Cadillac SUV. You're putting Clayton County residents in harm's way. The word on the street is you're asking for a $50,000 pay raise. I ain't got a problem with that. But you are not earning the money that we're giving you now. They say, "Don't hate the player, hate the game." I've heard also the street says that you have cut the budget of the Public Defender's Office. You and I, at least I believe you can afford your own lawyer. But there are some people in this county that cannot afford their lawyer, and the Public Defender is the place that would have to go. But you have cut their budget, but you asked for a $50,000 pay raise. That does not make any sense to me. Just to let you know that I'm passing the word about this, you're running this and everything like that. Complacency, all things are going wrong. I went to the Rec Center to vote, 18th of May. That was the first day of voting, and they had issues in there. And I called and informed them what was going on. Somebody was coming to use the Rec Center, and they put that person in the voting line. Everything moved slow that day. It seemed like this stuff is not together. As a 24-year Air Force veteran, we work on efficiency. But efficiency is not done in Clayton County. And I informed you before, my uncle said, "A person that counties watches his penny, not to worry about his dollars. You're not watching our pennies, and my evaluation, wasting your dollars." And the people of Clayton County going to know about it. You got voted without any kind of opposition behind you. Nobody's came forward. So we're working on that problem. If that bus stop is not removed.
Your time is up, sir. And let me give you a bit of advice. Don't always believe what the streets have to say. If you want the truth about what has been proposed and asked for, then give the CFO a call. She'll be able to get you the true and accurate information. Thank you, sir. Jody Chambers.
Okay. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, Felicia. My name is Jody Chambers, and I live in unincorporated Clayton County. And I just came here because I want to engage with Clayton County. I think that's an excellent ideal, that the community gets together and that we all together make decisions on how the county should be ran. Because no one person has the answer to everything. So one of the things that I wanted to engage in is being a part of the Boys and Girls Club. I initiated it at first, and for some reason, it left my side. So because it's going to be in the Community Center on Flint River Road, and they're supposed to have a walkthrough, I want to be a part of that. The other thing that I want to recognize is our SPOLOs dollars. And I would like to have an Oversight Committee for that because of the $75 million that we were shortfall of and that we have to make up. I think that putting a committee together that we can all work together, it wouldn't be so hard on just one person looking at how, how things are going to be paid for. With a committee, a citizen committee, we can all look at three different proposals, and then together, we make a decision. And that will bring the community together. So engage in Clayton, that's one of the items that I wanted to talk about. And I appreciate you giving me that time. Thank you.
Let me say this in reference to the SPOLOs projects. There's no real decision that needs to be made. When they go, when the citizens go to the poll to vote on whether or not to pass the SPOLOs, a list of those projects are already outlined, and we do not deviate from that list. So the, the money is already earmarked for specific programs.
Okay.
Or projects. But your, your request is duly noted.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more thing, if you might add. Mr. COO may be able to address it. But there was a SPOLOs committee, and it was a citizens committee, that actually went through a very detailed process to be able to speak to each of the department leaders of their needs. And they actually met on several occasions and assessed those needs. And that committee was formulated of citizens. The other thing I do want to address with the Boys and Girls Club, there is a citizens committee as well for that. And the walkthrough that was referenced, it's a walkthrough that is not necessarily open to the public at this time, only because the building is not ready. We're just going to kind of see the progress of it. But we all are having to be mindful of liabilities. And, you know, I can't sue ourselves, so I think it's okay if we go there. But as soon as it is, it is open for the public, it will go out to everybody. Also, within the Office of District 3, we send out updates periodically on where we are with that project, because it is the community's project. And it's something that's actually been around for, I know, well over 20 years, since I moved over 20 years ago. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey Edwards. All right, you're waiting for the zoning. Okay. Drew Andrews.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Community. I am here today because, first, I want to thank you. June 5th, the March to the Polls. It's the purest form of, some people afraid of the word protest. They want to say demonstration. But it is. It's an expression, let every people know that we're united. So I was very pleased to see members of this commission join arms with our young leaders. Thank you. We went over there. We had people not only registered to vote, but people took out their smartphones and actually completed the census. So thank you for that. But I'm here today because of an incident that happened, I believe it was last evening, or maybe the day before, regarding five young members of our community and a police officer. Having seen four minutes of that painful footage, I was enraged because of where we find ourselves. We're in the middle of a pandemic and civil unrest. Racial, racial tensions are high. And so with that, members of the Civil Rights Organization, I represent the National Urban League, you had National Action Network, along with Rainbow Push, and some of your very own young leaders here, met with Chief Roberts. Chief Roberts is an incredible leader, chief. He did not hide at all. We didn't have an appointment. We just went up there with some serious questions. He came outside because of social distancing, because he wanted everyone to be present who was there. He engaged us, and he did not leave until every one of us had exhausted our questions. He didn't dodge not one of them. So I admire Chief Roberts for that. And so he just asked that we be patient with him, be fair with him, because he's fair with us, and he's proven that time and time again. So what he said was that he would make the police camera, body camera footage available, along with the 911 calls. And as I was pulling up, I was receiving alerts that he did do that. And I watched almost 18 minutes of it. And I was so moved by the police officer wanting to make sure that those on the other side was safe. He was saying, "Please, please listen to me. Please, I don't want to hurt you, but I don't know if you have a gun or not. I received a call that you had a gun." I'm about to run out of time, but I just want to say thank you. We do have community policing here. We need the community to step up and help the, help the police with the.
Your time is up, sir, but you are absolutely right, and I really appreciate your words. A lot of people jump to judgment. And at another day, any law enforcement officer just wants the, the whole story to be told. So what I always ask is for people to have a little patience to look at everything. And I know in Clayton County, especially the Clayton County Police Department, they're going to be transparent in their actions. And I commend Chief Roberts for putting out all that information, because a lot of agencies might say, "Well, that might be part of investigation or something else." He put out everything. So it's hard to be a police officer. And a lot of times, I tell people, until you stand in the shoes of a police officer to make a split second decision, it's hard to gauge what you would do. But I appreciate your words very much.
Thank you.
And can I say, Drew, just thank you very much for coming forward.
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry.
Hold on, Commissioner Warner.
I just want to say thank you for coming forward. Because most folks.
And I apologize. I'm not going to prolong it. But considering that this did take place in District 3, I want to, first of all, say thank you, Drew, for the very enlightening conversation that you and I had today. And I thank you for your comments. But I want everybody to pay attention to an item on the agenda as well. This board has an opportunity to join in with many other communities across America to be able to speak to the very thing that we're discussing this afternoon or this evening. So I want you all to know that as you're a Commissioner and the one to represent the community, I hear you. And I hear both sides of the community. But I thank you for saying the community has to step up, because in the last three years, the difficult part has been really making sure that people feel safe, the community feels safe. And so we've got to do, continue to work collectively as we move forward in this difficult time. We know that emotions are heightened. But remember, in Clayton County, you've got to stay focused, take a step back, and be careful of adopting a narrative for here. Because as Mr. Chairman stated, I thank the chief for being so transparent. And I thank you, Drew. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership as the previous chief of police and as our chief.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for coming forward. Most folks have a preconceived decision based off of the non-information, and then you've got the information. And I just want to say thank you for coming forward, because most folks would have just sat down. But again, not only does, do the citizens have to step up, but also our elected officials have to step up as well. And we've got to take what we hear from the citizens, and we've got to create policy that is going to keep everyone safe. Now, I commend our, our chief, both our fire chief and our police chief, for they do outstanding jobs. And we do like the way he made a decision, but he did not make an abrupt decision, like many leaders have been doing in the past, and come up with a, a, a decision that is not just and didn't, wasn't fair to our police officers. And we have to make our police officers also know that we do, they do have our support in what they do, because they don't, do not have an easy job, especially in this season of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is it too late to have that item on the agenda taken out and read separately? I apologize.
Yeah, we've already adopted. But when we, if you'd like to make some comments about it after we call for the approval of the consent agenda, you can do so at that time.
Okay, I just know it doesn't allow for it to be read. I'm okay with it being there. But as Commissioner Davis just alluded to, this is one of those steps. And I think it's imperative that we highlight that step. So I didn't place it on the consent agenda, so, but it's okay. Thank you so very much. Please take a look at it.
We will make it, put it on our social media outlets, just so people are aware that we are taking that step. So.
Thank you so much, sir.
We will do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Commissioner Gregory, I'd like to go on and get in my little two cents since we're on this issue. I call it giving a sonogram. And one of the things I have to say, our police department, these men and women spend more time in the community than I think than most in the area. I mean, sometimes I feel bad, and sometimes I try to schedule meetings because I know there are four of the Commissioners who are also asking them to go to meetings. The police themselves hold meetings for the community to come to ask questions of the chief. The chief holds, you know, his coffee with, with citizens, a, a meeting where all his people are there to answer citizen questions. And to me, that's building up a sense of trust. It should build up a sense of trust. So when situations like this come along, I would hope that citizens in the community can say, "Well, you know, I know Chief Roberts, and I know that he stands for equality, and he, you know, has his officers doing right." And I would urge the citizens, "Let's have some trust here. And let's don't just jump when we see it at first. Let's just wait and hear from the chief." I was just amazed this morning at Facebook, how as people saw the videos, and they were going on and on and on, and, you know, forming opinions. And then tonight, when I look at it, everybody's walking it back because they see the entire picture. So again, my, my main thing is, as much as our chief and his staff spend in the community, engage in the citizens, I would urge citizens, let's have some trust in our police force and in our chief. And also, my second sonogram, let me just go on and, and since Commissioner Davis mentioned it, and, and give a sonogram for Chief Murkison. Yesterday, he graduated his first firefighter class. These were students who just graduated from high school. Seven of them are going straight to work for Clayton County Fire and EMT Services. The others are going to the recruit program to get more of the training that they need. And these were young people that we watched. And these were young people that we watched from immature little freshmen and graduated at eighteen and now they are getting recruited employees of our county. And having, knowing some of these kids, you know, day by day, when you hear them talk about what this means for them and how they'll be able to help their families. And then I know in our Brandon presentation, one of the things we talked about was salaries in the county and so forth. And these young people, they talk about how this is going to help their families so much. They are just so excited and just love this opportunity. I believe this program's going to be very successful because a lot of times it takes, you know, other kids to see before they recognize this is going to be good. And we had, I mean, we had a lot of times, we had to tell them, look, this is not like PE where you can just get out of it to six weeks because you're mad. You're going to be dealing with somebody's life. And so we expect you to study. So but anyway, my sonogram goes out to Chief Murkison uh and ourselves, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners for approving it, and also our Clayton County Board of Education. Because our Clayton County Board of Education, they had to bring in their people, align this curriculum with the state standards, make sure everything works and so forth. And um just wanted to throw that in tonight. So thank you all for allowing me this time.
All right, thank you for the sonograms. You started. All right, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Congratulations to all the victors in the past election, the primary election. I was going to change my entire agenda because I feel a certain sense of urgency within the community because of the hypersensitive nature of the climate that we're currently living in. And I too, uh, over the last two months, I have been talking to Chief Roberts about sensitivity training and making him aware of the climate. He's been very responsive, very professional, and him and his staff is doing a wonderful job. Now, um, I wanted to talk about beautification and low hanging fruit because we've got twelve inches of grass, we've got weeds going through our brand new sidewalks. We've got a lot of things. I don't know if the Commissioners drive through. District Four is in good shape. District One, Two, and Three is in horrible shape. But I wanted to focus on this one particular thing. Uh I am focusing on the gas station owners. A couple of those owners are clients of mine that happen to be of Indian culture. And Vice Chair Davis, uh when the BNY license was four thousand a year, they came to us with a sense of urgency to rescind that BNY license back down to two thousand. So that was done. So I'm going to be intentional and deliberate. I'm going to challenge all Commissioners and Chancellors to build relationships with the gas station owners. We have a tendency, we are in a poverty stricken community. Uh it costs three dollars for the average kid to go to the rec center that if their parents cannot afford to pay the monthly fee. So I'm going to challenge that community to create a fund that we can utilize the youth organization or some type of organization that we can have some funding because I think less than one percent of those organizations sponsor any Little League team, basketball team, and so on and so forth. So instead of just being takers of our dollars out of the community, I want to reach out to them and be intentional and deliberate to get them to get engaged, uh to sponsor some of these programs for the youth. I think the youth would greatly appreciate uh the community stores being involved in their recreational activities. I think that we can be proactive within that particular mindset uh as we move forward. So even though this was a negative connotation with the young men and probably traumatized and hope the parents see fit to get some counseling, but at the end of the day, uh we have to be proactive, seize this opportunity to reach out to the business owners. So I challenge all Commissioners uh within your district to reach out to the gas station owners to designate some particular group, to create a fund so we can raise funds for these young men and young ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex Georgia. I'll make this short. Uh I will, what I wanted to say has already been stated by Mr. Drew Andrews. And I want you to know that I'm Mickey Garber and I strongly support his statements. Thank you.
Thank you.
I relinquish the podium to the next speaker respectfully.
Thank you. All right, Janice Bennett, you're wanting to speak now or at the zoning petition?
I don't have to do the zoning because it was something additional I would like to say.
I can't understand you, ma'am.
I said it was something additional I would like to ask.
Please come forward. Uh Janice Bennett.
Good evening, everyone. Um I would like to take a minute. I was here for the zoning, but this is also something that is very important to me. This is my grandson. And I have been living in Clayton County for about, about twenty-three, twenty-four years now. And I started a boys' club called The Warriors of God. As you can see, you've got a T-shirt on. And I have been in contact also with Ms. Hambrick, Secretary Tina, and several other um officials, the state manager. But I would like to read this really quick and this totally tells everything I want to say. I would like your support in purchasing the property Old Town Mall. Old Town Mall is beautiful and I have oftentimes, you know, just looked at it and saw it just go to waste. The property, the properties, I'm sorry, will be, will be an asset to that property. That means I want to build a boys' club that will help the community so that we can build up the community to love and communicate and have mercy and compassion towards people. Um, the property will basically house this. Let me tell you. We have a construction plan to make Old Town Mall a self-sufficient life, live, work, nonprofit community. There will be daycare and a senior citizens daycare, coffee shop, convenience shop, chapel, theater, banquet halls. These things could be incorporated into Old Town Mall. But the main thing I want to talk about is a transitional home for the youth and for runaway children who are homeless. This transitional home will be a home set up so they can come in, get cleaned up, go to workshops to learn how to get a job, help them to get back into the community as, you know, effective in the, and be effective in the community. Like you said, teach them to fish instead of just feeding them fish. And um it will be a transitional home for sixty days. And in doing that time, we would let them go out, help them get jobs, whatever they need. Um we had also, I'm just kind of nervous if I'm talking to him.
You're fine.
So we would like to know why after twelve years, they won't allow us to buy Old Town Mall.
Question you have to ask City of Marl.
I did. I did ask the city tomorrow, so let me tell you. So at the time, I am also requesting audience with the mayor to discuss this matter. My first communication was sure that I would have a meeting. But when they turned, when it turned as soon as the, I guess, the city manager saw.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your time is up. If you wanted to talk further on the matter, you can call my office and we can talk offline.
Oh, okay, because I really need to talk to someone in charge who can push this because twelve years and they won't let nobody buy it.
I'm not saying we can push it because we're not the property owners and I don't know who they want to sell to. They have had some letters of interest on the property. But what it sounds like you're saying to me is you want the government to buy it and you build it out and utilize it.
No, I want to buy it. They won't sell it to me.
Okay, that's something different.
They won't sell it. That's the problem. I'm trying to get the mayor to sell it to me and they, now that they found out what I want to do with it, it's like they dissing me. That's all I can say. I've got rude emails and I have proof of that, that they just don't want to talk to me about it.
If you want to call me, we can talk further.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can't read this name. Jamin Jarman? Jarman, maybe Taylor? Okay, Carlos Benefield, it looks like.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carlos Gary Benefield. I live in the great District Three. And to piggyback on what Drew said, I was there with um with Chief Roberts and I want to commend the chief because you really don't have too many police officers like Chief Roberts that's going to come out and talk. Now, we have some people that was outside of Clayton County that's now is trying to start a protest with what's going on with the young men. And I had to let them know that we got to wait and see what Chief Roberts and his staff does first. Because the officer was there. He was on a call for a gun. So like Chief Roberts said, he has to prepare himself. He has to have a pair, prepare himself with the gun. Also, the young men, if you look at the video, shouldn't have been at the store for one. We have to hold ourselves too as a community accountable for things that we do. These parents need to hold themselves accountable for what their kids do. I have a 501(c)(3) called Cuzzles Mentor. I go out in the community. I'm in these streets. I know what these young boys and girls are doing. And I try to talk to them about it because I'm originally from Chicago, so I know. I've been out here on these streets. I know what it is. My mother was a police officer in Chicago. So I'm trying to let these young people know at the same time, we have to hold ourselves accountable for what we do. That police officer didn't do nothing wrong. He did his job. It was the people that was around him. What are you doing to these boys? What did they do? Well, why don't you wait and see what they did? And at the end of the day, them five young men went home with their life and the police did too.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, Carlos Benefield. Thank you for your commitment to our community. And thank you for stepping up and serving on a board and making a difference in young people's lives.
Our next item is the consent agenda. It would be all items minus number fourteen and thirty-one.
All right, is there a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any other items? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item would be item number fourteen. Number fourteen is the proposed pay structure for superior and state court law clerks.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, as well as our citizens, my fellow citizens, Clayton County citizens. On behalf of Court Administration, Human Resources is requesting, is presenting a proposed pay structure for the state and superior courts' law clerks. The proposed pay structure will provide a flexible pay structure for incoming incumbents. And this pay structure will be based on several compensable factors. If approved, the request will result in title changes of the current classifications. And the cost to implement the pay structure is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion? All right, the item is due to the lack of a motion.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
The next item is item number thirty-one, which is a Resolution 2020-105.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Board. I have Resolution 2020-105, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into amended articles of agreement with certain community charitable organizations, governmental agencies, and professional service providers located and conducting business in Clayton County to authorize the chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget when necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All this may be required under the terms of the agreement to provide an effective data resolution for other purposes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before the motion, um well, we can go ahead with the motion.
All right, I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving second. Any questions?
Yes, it's not a question, but it's a comment because I talked with our financial, finance director this afternoon and found out that this is not what I thought it was. I thought it was a new presentation regarding these charitable organizations. So if she would explain to the rest of us what she explained to me this afternoon, so we'll be clear on this and what we're voting on.
Yes, please.
Sure. Commissioner Hambrick, as we discussed earlier today, this resolution is to extend the amount of time that the recipients of the funds have to spend the money. A lot of them were not able to spend the money by the required deadline of June the thirtieth because of COVID-19 when they were closed for a couple of months. So this request is to extend, I think, give them additional three months that would put in there, additional three months to spend those funds and not have to return them to the county.
Any other questions, Commissioner Hambrick? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
That answered the consent agenda. The next item is item A, which is Resolution 2020-94, a resolution providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year 2021 budget.
Yes, I have Resolution 2020-94, which is a resolution of providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year 2021 budget to provide for the appropriation of expenditures and accounting of anticipated funding sources, to provide for the circumstances under which the budget may be amended by the Board of Commissioners, the chairman or the chairman's designee, to provide an effective data resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Slipped my mind that quick. Uh Ms. Bevins, there's amendment to the budget that she needs to read into record. So please, Ms. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening, good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This evening, um we have before you the request to approve the budget for fiscal year 2021. This was presented to you in the community on June the second during the budget hearing. This budget, that proposed budget included revenues in the amount of two hundred sixteen point two million dollars and twelve point six million dollars used to fund balance to support the general fund expenses in the amount of two hundred twenty-eight point eight million dollars for the day-to-day operations of the county. Since then, we've had a couple of items that we needed to add to the, reclasses for the most part of jobs, of positions rather, in a couple of departments. They are budget neutral, but we still need to amend them into the budget so they can be on the record as new positions and deleting the old positions. So um for the general fund, we have, we have reclassified positions for IT, parts and recreation, and senior services as shown on the amendment that was emailed to you and that also I placed on the dais and for Commissioner Warner in the conference room for you to review. And as I stated earlier, there's no change in the general fund budget. It will remain at the two hundred twenty-eight point eight million dollars. And it also included some additional funding for central services for part-time personnel as well as expenditures for other contracted services and other money equipment for emergency management department. Again, all of these changes have a zero impact on the general fund. Also included in the amendment is an amendment to the special revenue funds for the agent program. The department has requested to reclassify position and this change also has no financial impact on the special revenue funds. So that amount will remain the same. The final amendment is to add the projected revenue and expenditures to the capital projects funds to account for the recently approved SPOS referendum. As I stated during the Um, as I stated during the budget hearing, we didn't have anything budgeted there because we were waiting to see if the referendum would be approved, and it was approved. So we have included those funds, um, in the total budget for, um, approval. So I'm requesting the Board to approve the amended fiscal year twenty-one budget as, as follows. The general fund of two hundred twenty-eight point eight million dollars. Special revenue fund of thirty-nine point nine million dollars. Actually, let me read the, the full amount. General fund is two hundred twenty-eight million, eight hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars. Special revenue fund is thirty-nine million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars. Capital projects fund is two hundred eighty million, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars. Debt service fund is two thousand, thirty-eight thousand, fifty-one dollars. Internal service fund is sixty-eight million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred nine dollars. Enterprise fund, three million, fifty thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars. The total of all funds, six hundred twenty-two million, four hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars. I also want to remind you that the general fund budget is based on maintaining the same net mileage rate as last year of fifteen point five nine six. And also that we are projecting a beginning fund balance at July one, twenty twenty, of one hundred and five point four million dollars. And a projected ending fund balance of ninety-two point eight million dollars at the end of the fiscal year on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And that is all I have.
Okay, so therefore I will make a motion to approve the amended budget as outlined by Chief Financial Officer Ramona Bivins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. On the online item, total amendments for the FY twenty twenty-one, FY, sorry, twenty twenty-one SPOS fund budget, was that amount, um, generated conservative, with a conservative mindset considering of where we are, uh, financially with the economy? And I, and I know we did, but just for the sake of the community to be able to hear that. And, and let me tell you why I'm saying that. Because I'm, we have one community, Rivers Edge. Y'all, I hear you. Rivers Edge is waiting to have the rest of that trail built out. And I think that there were some commitments made to the citizens of Rivers Edge. But constantly we're being told about the funds that are collected and the funds being lower. So I think it's imperative that when we do put this in the budget and make these promises, that they're done in a conservative manner with the thought of where we are, um, financially and economically at this time.
Yes, Commissioner Warner, that is correct. We did use a conservative approach to projecting the revenue as we always do with all of our amendments.
Any other comments?
You're welcome.
Any other comments? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item, next two or three are board appointments. Mr. Chairman?
All right, first board appointment is to the Green Space Land Trust Board. I think we have two appointments remaining. Uh, the two members will be appointed immediately and will reser, will serve till June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Well, I'm sorry, they will start this date immediately and will expire June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any recommendations?
Oh, the last meeting I, this is Commissioner Gregory. The last meeting I did ask to hold this over and I apologize. And I know one of the things we've talked about so much is making sure people we put on these boards, you know, are qualified or, you know, have that general interest. And I do have someone with Green Space and, you know, that's a very unique person. So if you, at least one person give me an opportunity to come back at the next meeting, I would appreciate it.
All right, any other recommendations? Or is there a recommendation? All right, we will hold both of those over until, uh, next meeting. Madam Clerk. Next, uh, board appointment is Veterans Advisory Board, District Four appointment. Uh, the appointment will begin June sixth, twenty twenty and will expire June sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I move that we appoint Mr. Ralph Zellum to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Board for Ms. Sloan Williams, who resigned from the board. Appointment is to fill her unexpired term. The term will begin immediately and will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Any recommendations?
I would like to recommend for Ms. Pillar Dawn to serve on the Library Board.
Give us that name again, Commissioner.
Um, LaPiller Dawn.
LaPiller Dawn. Okay, is there a second?
Young lady that received proclamation.
Okay, great. Is there a second? Commissioner Gregory, did you second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to also to the Library Board from Ms. Lily Golden. Term will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, it's a new appointment and is to fill her expired seat. Any recommendations?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can we hold that position because that person was, uh, from District Two and I would like to get someone from District Two on that, on the, uh, Library Board? So if we can hold that, I would appreciate it.
All right, hearing no other, uh, recommendations, Madam Clerk, please hold that for next meeting. That concludes the appointments.
Our next item are zoning items. Before we start, I'd like to read the limits for the public hearings for the zoning. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the time mem, minute allotment. When the time runs out, the speakers will immediately cease and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item should have no right to rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of your organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding signs, clapping, and yelling to show support will not be permitted. But a show of hands quietly standing will be permitted to show your support or opposition to a speaker. Our first item is item F, which is BOC two zero zero one, zero zero thirty-eight, to allow a new board, billboard to replace existing.
Yes, Agenda Item two zero one, zero zero three eight, a conditional use permit. The applicant, Cape Town Partners LLC, on behalf of the Forest Bulldog LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit for a new billboard. The new billboard is set to replace a pre-existing billboard at the location on Tower Road near the intersection of Highway forty-one and the intersect, and the fork at Highway nineteen forty-one. The subject property consists of zero point five two acres and is currently zoned Old Dixie Hotel District, located within the Old Dixie Highway overlay district. The parcel number is identified on the agenda. Staff recommendation was entering a recommendation for tabling on this evening and the zag recommendation is for approval conditional. However, the applicant has submitted by enwriting a request to withdraw this application for the conditional use permit for a billboard. So I have that for the record.
Okay, I missed it. You said this, they sent that in?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Okay, Commissioner.
So I move that we withdraw two zero zero one dash zero zero three eight.
All right, I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next.
The next item is G, which is BOC two zero zero two dash zero zero forty-three, to allow expansion of an existing quarry.
Agenda item number two zero zero two dash zero zero four three, conditional use permit. The applicant, Florida Rock Industries, Inc., on behalf of Rockland LLC, is, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of an existing mineral extraction quarry. The subject property is currently zoned HI Heavy Industrial. It's located at five six ninety, Highway eighty-five. Parcel ID is identified on the agenda. The acre total property is six to one point six two acres. Then the property has approximately one thousand and nine hundred and fifty-two feet of frontage along Highway eighty-five. Staff recommendation is for approval conditional with the list of conditions and the zoning advisory group recommendation is for denial.
All right, is the applicant's present? Please come forward.
Uh, good evening Chairman Turner and Vice Chairman Davis, Commissioners. My name's Clay Massam. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Florida Rock. Uh, I'm gonna request that the application be tabled. Uh, we, uh, had a schedule issue that prevented a meeting that we were, uh, gonna have with Commissioner Hambrich, uh, before tonight's vote. So we're hoping to have that discussion just so we can discuss some questions she had about the, the application. And so, uh, my request is just that it be tabled for tonight.
Commissioner Hambrich, are you clear on the request of the applicant?
Can you hear me?
Barely. Could you speak up a little bit, please?
Uh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Uh, yes, I, I, I agree to, uh, to, uh, table, table this.
Okay.
Make a motion to table, uh, zero zero four three.
Yes, four, four, zero, zero four four. Does, do they have to be read separately or?
Yes, and, um, to what day?
To what day?
I'll, I'll clarify. To, to the, uh, table to the next meeting, so I guess that'd be in July.
Yeah, find us a exact date, uh, Ms. Bam. It's twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Commissioner Hambrich, if you would just, uh, restate your motion to include table until the next meeting date, which is July twenty-first.
Okay, I move that, uh, zero zero four three be tabled for, for the next zoning meeting date of July twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Ms. Bam?
The, the next agenda item is a companion application, BOC two zero zero two, zero zero four four. This is for ACUP. The applicant, Florida Rock Industries, on behalf of Rockland LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion on a smaller piece of property, approximately eight acres in size, to ex, to use primarily for access to the mineral extraction site sounded, uh, earlier. The property is zoned HI Heavy Industrial and is located at three hundred Lees Mill Road. Parcel ID is identified on the agenda. Staff recommendations for, uh, approval. The zoning advisory group recommendations for approval.
And, and on behalf of the applicant, Florida Rock, I make the same request to table that application until the July twenty-first Board of Commissioners meeting.
Commissioner Hambrich?
Uh, yes, I move that, um, zero zero four four be tabled for the next zoning meeting of July twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you Commissioners.
Agenda item, BOC two zero zero four dash zero zero four seven, modification. The applicant, Matt Faust, on behalf of Adams Homes, is requesting three modification of conditions of the front yard setback on three lots. The subject properties are identified as addresses five three four five, five three four seven, and five three seven one Creekview Way. The subject properties are currently zoned REM Residential Multifamily. The, they are represented as lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, located within the Creekview Commons Town Home Community. Parcel ID numbers are identified. Staff recommendation is for approval conditional. Zoning advisory group recommendations for approval conditional. The conditions are as read, are as, are as, um, as I will read. Lot number fourteen, front yard setback shall be modified to reflect nine point five feet. Lot fifteen, front yard setback shall be modified to reflect seventeen feet. Lot number twenty-six, front yard setback shall be modified to reflect fifteen point seven. And I'll just add, the reasons for the request being a modification is because these are, are changes from approved conditions when the, uh, town home development was established by the Board of Commissioners with, uh, those attached conditions. So now they're requesting modification of those front yard reductions.
All right, are the applicants present? Are the applicants present? All right, Commissioner Gregory, how would you like to proceed?
I am fine with approving this. Is it okay Chuck to go on and approve this without the applicant present?
I would recommend that, uh, we have a public hearing first. Although, although the, um, the applicant won't be here to present, there may be somebody who might be here to speak for or against.
So if we're gonna take a vote, we need to go through the public hearings, basically what he's saying. All right, is it your intent to proceed forward without the applicant being present, uh, Commissioner Gregory?
Um, yes, that's fine.
Okay, so at this time, I might ask if anybody's here in reference to this applicant's request in favor of it to come forward? Anyone like to speak in favor of it? Would anybody want to speak in opposition to it? Commissioner Gregory?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have a motion that we approve this petition with the, uh, conditions set forth by the staff. Um, Ms. Bam?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question before you do that. She's saying to approve it with the conditions. Have they already agreed to the conditions?
Yes, the applicant was present at the zoning advisory group meeting and did, uh, agree to these same conditions.
Okay, please proceed.
Commissioner Gregory, do you have a question for me?
Yeah, I just wanted you to read those conditions that...
The, um, the lot reduction to three lots. Lot number fourteen, front yard setback is modified from twenty feet down to nine point five feet. Lot fifteen, front yard setback is modified to reflect a seventeen feet from twenty. Lot number twenty-six, front yard setback is modified to reflect a fifteen point seven feet previously required to be twenty. So the, the, uh, conditions state the new modified setback for the front yard.
And that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Hambrich. All right, Commissioner Hambrich seconded the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Next item is J, which is BOC two zero zero two dash zero zero four two, which is modification of existing conditions.
We have before you case number two zero zero two, zero zero four two. A modification request. The applicant, Chief Real Estate Investment LLC, is requesting a modification to zoning conditions to allow a convenience store with gas station. The condition was stated that this had to occur prior to the establishment of a restaurant on an adjacent parcel. This, uh, case appeared before you in, uh, in November of last year and now they're back for a modification of condition number two. Subject property is currently zoned general business and is located at the corner of Highway eighty-five and Webb Road. The property is approximately three point five zero acres in size. The, uh, recommendation for staff is approval with conditions, the modified conditions. And I'll read those and just state that zag also recommended approval with the modified conditions. The conditions now read, read with the modifications. The first condition has been altered to state, "The site shall be limited to a building consisting of not more than three individual tenant spaces and a convenience store with not more than five fuel service pumps." "The building design and construction shall be consistent with the conceptual building elevation submitted with the application." The condition that was struck was stated, "Prior to the issues of a certificate of occupancy for the gas convenience store on track A, construction on track B and C shall be in progress." The applicant asked this, this be modified. Condition, the new condition number two states, "The remaining portion of the property identified as track B shall remain undeveloped until such time a use is identified for the property." The, so, condition number three, "The site shall be limited to one curb cut on Webb Road and two on Highway eighty-five, subject to the approval of the Transportation and Development Department." Condition number four, "All trash refuse areas are to be enclosed on three sides with brick and other masonry materials consistent with the materials on the primary building." Condition number five, "States provided eight-foot sidewalk along the road frontage along Webb Road and Highway eighty-five." Condition number six, "No outside vending machines except an accessory air dispenser." Condition number seven... Condition number seven, it's been struck and revised, it made reference to canopy lighting. The revised condition states provide at least one trash container for each service pump. Condition number eight, the primary facade shall be four-sided, consisting of 80% brick, excluding window areas. It may also consist of a combination of stone, cement with stucco, other masonry materials, or a combination of materials. The gas canopy pillars shall be brick consistent with the materials of the primary facade. Condition number nine, provided five-foot boundary landscape strip adjacent to Webb Road and Highway 85. These are the conditions as recommended.
All right, is the applicant's present? Please come forward. Sir, please state your name and any number of minutes that you would like to reserve for rebuttal statements if somebody should want to oppose your request.
Okay, Commissioner, I'll be very brief and I will reserve some time for rebuttal.
How long?
We reserve three minutes.
Three minutes.
So first of all, good evening, and I also too want to congratulate Chairman on your victory.
Thank you.
As well as Commissioner Hambrik and Commissioner Warner. I know what it's like to run the election, I've served on the College Park City Council for 16 years. Also serving the northern part of Clayton County along with Commissioner Hambrik. So congratulations. I also want to just say hi to Commissioner Gregory and Commissioner Davis as well. I thank y'all for allowing me to come before you.
State your name for us, sir.
Tracy Wyatt.
Thank you.
I'm trying not to get away with that. The item before you, I'm here to speak on behalf of staff who did an excellent job at putting this together, so I want to certainly commend staff for their work they put in this project and their approval for this project. Also like to commend the zoning advisory group. They was a little tough on me, you can tell they had done their homework, but at the end of the day, they also recommended approval of this project. We're in agreement with all nine conditions. We would accept, we think they're reasonable, and we're simply asking you to accept the recommendation of your staff and your zoning advisory council to approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody here like to speak in favor of this applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of it? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Warner?
I'm sorry. First, I want to say thank you, this has been a long time coming. I do want to make sure that that stipulation was read about working with Economic Development Authority to secure a suitable tenant for the second phase. Was that read out loud?
No Commissioner, it was not. I add that as a 10th condition, and that condition shall read that the marketing of the track B shall be in cooperation with the Clayton County Economic Development for finding a suitable tenant for that site.
Okay, wonderful.
Hold on a second Commissioner. Commissioner, hold on just a second.
I'm sorry.
Is the applicant in agreeance with that?
We're certainly, we've already hired one of Clayton County's finest, Mrs. Dees. We've already signed the contracts, she already has to sign up, so that is certainly acceptable.
Okay, great, all right.
Also, we can't make it necessarily a condition, but I would like for us to work with the Restaurant Association for the State of Georgia to be able to have access to a formidable tenant there that would bring value to our community, but just wanted to make that statement. I want to say thank you to the ZAG board, and my recommendation is for approval with the additional...
Condition number 10.
That I just stated.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions? Hearing those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, issue unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you board.
Yes.
Agenda item K, moving on to that agenda item, BOC 1910-2-0023, future land use plan amendment. The applicant John W. Jordan is requesting a future land use map amendment from mixed use to light industrial use designation to allow for a warehouse distribution facility. There are two other companion applications with this, the companion rezoning as well as the companion conditional use permit. The subject property is located at 2464 Mount Zion Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, which is further described with the parcel ID number on the agenda. The property is approximately 72 acres in size, has 921.76 feet of frontage along Mount Zion Road. Staff recommends, recommendation for the future land use plan amendment is that the property be designated from mixed use to MXI, mixed use commercial industrial. The recommendation from the zoning advisory group was to deny this application, but however again, as I stated, staff recommendation is recommending that the new land use plan designation be MXI, mixed use commercial industrial.
All right, applicant, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and congratulations again on the election. We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you, appreciate your leadership. On this particular, and there's a presentation packet you have, this is Greg Heck, 205 Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, 30281. As you know, this is 2464 Mount Zion Road with a couple of different applications. Basically, this is a warehouse distribution facility off Mount Zion and Richardson Parkway. The facility should add about 200 permanent jobs or 75, as well as 75 or more construction jobs, significant tax revenue. Presently, the land has a tax bill of $13,000, but after construction, there's an anticipated property tax value of over $40 million with a tax bill of...
Mr. Heck, if I can just interrupt, just one second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
How many minutes would you like to reserve in rebuttal?
Three, would that be all right, Chair?
Three, okay. Please proceed.
And with a projected revenue of property taxes of about $725,000 before you get to occupational tax certificate revenues. The facility would be developed by Hillwood, some of the model sites are before you. We have folks from Hillwood as well here. The facility follows the emphasis on logistics in the 2034 comprehensive plan and the statements in Advest Clayton's report on logistics center. The facility is south of Allen Vigil Ford, close to I-75. There is a neighborhood in a port of that, but the elevation provides a natural sound and sight barrier. Also, there are berm's being put in also. Also, to the east side where that neighborhood is, the applicant has agreed to 100-foot buffer as opposed to the 50-foot buffer, and also a 60-foot buffer by two other lots to the north. They are prohibiting truck traffic on the south of Mount Zion Road. The facility is on 70 acres, and the project has gone through the DRI process and a traffic study by ARC, Greta, Clayton, and GDOT, and adjustments have been made accordingly. I know this is just the first part of it, but if you want to go through the packet, you can see the site plan, you can also see the location, you can see the restricted access, you can see some of their model sites which are excellent in their industrial relationships. As you go through it as well, you will see that it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan and accordance with Advest Clayton. In that particular manner, I'll stop for questions if anybody has some, but that's the presentation on the first part, but it also goes in combination with the others that I don't have to repeat it.
I have a couple of questions right quick. How many loading bay docks are on this facility? And which, and where are they located on the building? Towards the back where the subdivision is or towards the front of the roadway?
Can we get to pass the first one, because that question is more with the zoning? Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, like if we take the vote, I mean, get the issues on the future land use, I think that's more of a zoning question right now.
Okay. What I'm trying to figure out is how it is in adjacent or in comparison to what I'm looking at on this map.
Okay.
So you're saying they're on the back or the front?
I'm gonna let Mr....
On the left side or...
Probably a little bit, I'm Scott Martin with Hillwood Investment Properties.
So show me where the loading docks are.
They're along these two sides of the building.
Okay.
There's about 150 total.
About 150?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there anyone who want to speak in favor of this request? Anybody here to speak in favor of it? Anybody like to speak in opposition? All right, if you would, let's take you one at a time. This gentleman right here, please come forward. One with the hat on, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for allowing me this time, I'll do as quick as I possibly can. The question that you just asked where the parking space was, it's 75 feet from my back This is concerning to us, they're going to eliminate all of our woods and replace it with noise and pollution. And having a very sick wife and no possible way to live anywhere else where I've loved to live for the last 43 years, we are very much opposed to this. I just don't know what else to say. Thank you so much, I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry.
Get your name, sir.
My name is Dixon Pounsey, P-O-U-N-C-E-Y. I live at 7051 Lodge Pole Drive, which is right where they park the trucks. There's supposed to be 100 and some odd parking spots against our back fence almost.
Thank you, sir. Next person. State your name for us, please.
Amy Puckett, 2574 Crab Apple Lane. I spoke at the last meeting and I'm gonna tell you, the road, Mount Zion Boulevard is already so backed up with traffic, that intersection there at the QT is not gonna be a good spot. You're gonna have school buses going back, you're gonna have MARTA buses, you got car carriers that's letting off at Allen Vigil and Landmark right in the middle of the road, you're gonna throw some transfer trucks in there, we gonna have people getting hurt and killed. There's already potholes so big it'll knock the front end out from under your car trying to get to Kaiser or wherever you need to go. And they can say what they want to, but Mount Zion Road has two schools on it. Over on the parkway, you got the high school, you got people trying to get to Kaiser, this is a populated area. I've lived in this area 30 years, well, in my house. You go right to my back, right behind my house, and it's the woods. All this noise, I don't see how they're gonna buffer it because all this noise from 75, you lay there at night and that's all you hear is transfer trucks. The woods don't even buffer it. So I can't see how 100 feet or 200 feet or whatever they're willing to give, if you can hear it all the way to 75, how you gonna stop us from hearing all the back, trucks backing up and the air brakes? And I submitted a petition...
And I'll get to that.
...that's got 53 signatures on it, we don't want this. We're homeowners, you got elderly people living in this neighborhood. We've got new people moving in, rundown houses, they've bought and fixed up. A lot of them have said to me now, well, if I'd know this, I wouldn't have bought this house. Our subdivision has been going down, but it's building back up, we're getting people moving in instead of people moving out and leaving empty houses. We really, really, we got enough empty warehouses, people, we really do. We got enough empty warehouses, they can go use one of them. Thank you Chairman, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Next.
I'm Jamie Ferguson, I live at 6987 Lodge Pole Drive, and I'm opposed to the warehouse facility going in because it's literally in my backyard, and it's going to cause major, to her point, major traffic, noise, pollution issues, wildlife impact, major reduced quality of life for the community that's right there with many elderly people and sick people as he said, as he stated to his point, and major reduced quality of life. Please don't approve this warehouse, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is John Keane, K-E-A-N-E, and I live at 6972 Lodge Pole Drive, and again, I'm one of these that are saying that we do not want this thing approved. Before I start, when we got this thing, when we got the certified mail, I went, oh my goodness, somebody's trying to sue me. And we looked at that thing and went, goodness gracious, this is the first time in 46 years that I have lived there that somebody contacted us about something like this. So we knew it was a big deal. So we looked at this thing and we saw 886,000 square feet, 886,000 square feet. How big is that? Well, let me see, maybe I'll go to Amazon and see what their largest warehouse is, 1 million square feet. So we are only 113,000 square feet away from that. 300 bays is what it originally had, this guy said 150 bays. Well, if it was 150 bays, maybe it wouldn't be so bad, but we don't want it at all. The very fact that we have this thing coming over and like Dick said and like Amy said, it's gonna come right into our backyards. Now luckily for me, I live across the street, so it won't be on top of me exactly, but we can sit there and at nighttime, I can hear the airplanes revving from the airport. So this is a noise place, and 75, going up and down 75 is, you know, we hear these trucks all night long. As far as, as far as the, as far as the transportation in and out and the traffic, it's gonna be terrible, as Amy said about the school buses coming up and down, Walmart trucks.
I'm sorry, sir, but your time is up.
Okay.
There's three minutes for rebuttal.
I appreciate it, please turn it down.
From Mr. Heck, but before he speaks, I will submit to the clerk that I did receive a petition from Miss Puckett for the homeowners, homeowners, there's 53 of them, and what they are citing as some of the reasons is the traffic issues as previously stated, homeowners' property values will drop, there will be noise added, air breaks and so forth as also stated, and school buses and basically the travel on Mount Zion Road. And I will submit this to the clerk as a 53 petition against this request. Mr. Heck?
I'm gonna let Mr. Martin introduce a couple of the safeguards that are going in a little bit on the noise if you want to address it.
You get three minutes, gentlemen.
Okay, I'm Scott Martin, Hillwood Investment Properties. In terms of the noise, you know, again, we've increased our buffers to 100 feet from the property line, so the reality, you know, the, I guess the maximum or the minimum that the truck court will actually be to the property line is gonna be 100 feet, it'll likely be a little bit further, and then the building itself will be another 185 feet from there. So really, we're talking about almost 300 feet from the property line to where this building's gonna be. In terms of noise, we're, you know, again, we've got buffers, we've got enhanced landscaping, berm's are certainly something that we've already talked about with our civil engineer, and given the grades out there along this east side of the property, the building itself will sit significantly below the property lines, and we feel that that alone will kind of provide a lot of natural, you know, noise abatement that should, should take care of, you know, most of the issues or all of the issues.
Is that it? Is that it? All right. Any question for the petitioners from the Board of Commissioners?
I do have one. The traffic study, can you discuss that? I know that's a one-lane highway, I believe, on Richardson as well as Mount Zion.
Hey, good evening. My name's Wayne Matthews. I'm the engineer on this one. And, uh, the traffic study was performed. It was submitted to ARC, Greta, Clayton County Transportation Development and GDOT as a prop, uh, part of the DRI process. Richardson Parkway is a two-lane road with a center, uh, two-way left-turn lane. Uh, all trucks are going to be directed northbound towards Mount Zion Boulevard. That's got a, uh, DOT has a planned improvement, pretty substantial one, uh, for that road in the next few years. That was taken into account for the, uh, as part of the traffic study. All tra, all trucks are going to be pointed that way. We'll sign it appropriately so as to not send any southbound towards the schools and the residences like the, uh, the community has expressed. Thanks.
All right, any other questions for the petitioners? All right, Commissioner Gregory.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the future land use plan designation for this property from a mixed-use to the mixed-use commercial industrial, please.
All right, is there a second?
Yes, I have a second.
All right, any other questions? All right, here are none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. I'm, uh, opposed it. Uh, four, one, it sounds like, so.
Nay on that.
Who was that? Commissioner Warner. So, it's three, two, it passes. Next.
Agenda item L, case number BOC 1910-0021. This is the companion rezoning application. The applicant, John W. Jordan, is requesting a rezoning of parcel from AG Agriculture to ALI Light Industrial to allow for an 886,000-square-foot warehouse distribution facility. Again, this is companion to the previous case as well as companion to the following case, conditional use permit. The property located at the same address on the 72 acres of land with 921, 21 feet affrontage. The, uh, consistent with the applicant's request, staff recommends to rezone the property to MXI, limited to the following uses, limited to a warehouse as a primary use and similar light manufacturing, assembly, and storage and distribution uses. The, uh, the next one would be an office and administrative facilities, limited to wholesale business, limited to tractor and trailer storage. These are the uses that the MXI district would be limited to. All other uses under the MXI district would not be allowed unless they categorically fit within the, uh, the uses, uh, outlined. The staff recommendation addresses those conditions. The zoning advisory group recommendation was for denied.
Applicants.
Chairman, Commissioner, we present as stated previously and have accommodated in accordance with staff and commissioner-
The zoning advisory group denied.
What's that?
No. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
And presented as, as, as staff and commissioner have, uh, district commissioner have requested in terms of accommodations, the substance is the same as in the last in the land use amendment.
Any minutes for rebuttal?
Three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Anybody want to speak in favor of? Anyone want to speak in favor of the request? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Please come forward, ma'am.
My name is Cheryl Roman. 7052 Lodge Pole Drive. Pretty much the same as everyone else. I have a son that's a severe asthmatic and the fumes and from these trucks could create a very severe health hazard for him. I will end up walking out into my front yard and looking across to what I used to look at as woods. And we'll be able to see this. And as been stated before, we do have the noise from the highway. So, in putting this that much closer than what the highway is, there's no way that they can evade the noise completely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak? Commissioner Warner, if you could put your phone on mute, please. Where are we? Please come forward, sir.
Don Sharp, 7043 Lodge Pole Drive. I'm the next last house on a dead-end street at Lodge Pole. This, uh, undisturbed buffer zone that they're recommending is primarily woods. The whole area is wooded area. They're going to provide 100-foot primarily of woods, which is nice and could be, uh, eliminate some noise hazards during the summer months. What do I see in the winter? For three or four months in the winter? A big ass warehouse, excuse me. Not com, not, uh, with dock doors, lining up two blocks in a row, more than two blocks in a row, with over 100 parking spaces for over 100 trailers, 40-foot trailers. Again, if you were in a residential area and went out and looked out your back door or your back window and saw this kind of, uh, uh, structure during the winter with no noise abatement whatsoever, it would be very depressing. And, uh, I don't believe there's any such contingency in Clayton County other than this proposal where you have this magnitude of a structure adjacent to property, property values. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Excuse me.
Come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Patricia Keane. I live at 6972 Lodge Pole Drive. Landmark Dodge wrote a really nice letter to the zoning committee. And I don't know if you have it. It, it was read at the zoning committee meeting and, and explained what it was going to be like for their business and for their, their clients and people that came brought their cars and all. And, um, we were thrilled to see it because we didn't talk to anybody at Landmark. And in fact, we really wished that Alan Vigil would have written something too, but we didn't talk with him. The other thing is, it's a spec warehouse, so it doesn't have anybody going there. And, you know, you've been through Clayton County and you've seen empty shopping centers and places like that. And so, this thing could go up and be so hard for all of us. And we don't even know who's going to be there if anybody moves in there. So, you know, I'm like everyone else. I don't want it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Spigner. I live at 2583 Crab Apple Lane. And I don't have any more to add other than we don't want it. I'm one of the seniors that they're talking about. I'm a senior. I am sick. And this will not help me at all. And they keep referring to Mount Zion Road. It's Mount Zion Boulevard. And that's what it's going to impact, not Mount Zion Road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Anybody else? All right, uh, Mr. Heck.
Yes, agenda item M, the third-
No, 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 we haven't voted on this.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Heck.
I'm going to do it.
Say the, the use is consistent with the land use surrounding it. The elevations and the berms should handle a great deal of this issue. And also, I, I believe under this that we would confirm that the MXI does not require more than one use per the code. Just want to confirm that on the record. Other than that, we would state this is a good jobs engine, to say the least, for the county. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Gregory.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, you know, um, before I offer motion either way, as soon as we came out of this pandemic, you know, Clayton County ranked up there as the highest area, counting with unemployment when we came out of, well, we're still in this pandemic. But we've got the highest unemployment again. And I look at bringing, um, you know, 200-plus jobs to the area, you know, that's, I just see that as a win. When we've got programs in place where we're partnering with Atlanta Area Tech to train people, you know, the workforce development, uh, the adult ed program with Clayton County Public Schools. They have a strong work-based learning academy where once the people get their GEDs, they're training them to go into these logistics centers. Uh, Ms., Ms., Erica Rocker Willis mentioned that during this pandemic, when we, when everything was shut down, the logistics e-commerce industry really helped Clayton County. And, you know, and I know, you know, you would never make people happy like that or, and, and with any decision. Earlier, Commissioner Hambrik mentioned, when we talked about the branding, you know, when we said we're a affordable or lower-income area. And some of the reasons that we enjoy this affordable community is because of the business community and what they provide to the, to the community. And, um, I just wanted to say that. And with that, um, I would like to offer a motion to accept this, uh, petition with the conditional use permit. Ms. Fane, you've got to jump in and help me with this. And some of the stipulations that I am asking for is I would like to ask that the developers continue, well, that the, we were planning a meeting. However, I think the, that's when the COVID-19 came in. I'd like to ask the developer to resume meeting with this community as, um, they have, uh, gotten together, you know, to help revitalize their pro, their pro, their community. I want the developers to work with them as they promised. I would like for the developer to also set aside some funding for future need, maybe in, I don't know how you figure it out, but any kind of escrow. Let's say if there's a need for any kind of a traffic light in the area and so forth, uh, like we did to Castellini on Highway 42. Then there are funds there and it won't take away from the taxpayers' money. I'd like for the, uh, developers' occupants to work with the county's new Key Clayton Beautiful Program and do some things like help adopt portions of Richardson Parkway. If you ride down that Parkway, you see how nasty and dirty it is. You've got to do something. And again, um, with the conditional use permit, Ms. Fane, if you would-
I'll clarify for you. The action that we're looking for on the rezoning is a condition that limits the use of the property to, to one or more of the following uses or a combination of. It does not require a mixture of uses, but it would allow either one of these uses or a combination of these uses. Those uses are conditioned under the rezoning to limit the use to warehouse as a primary use and similar, similar light manufacturing, assembly, and storage, distribution uses. Upon the issues of the conditional use permit that will sound next, office and administrative facilities, wholesale business, tractor and trailer storage. These are the uses limited to the MXI zoning that's proposed.
Ms. Fane, are we able to strike that tractor and trailer storage?
Out of the, from the MXI rezoning?
Yeah.
Yes.
For this particular. And also, I think, um, there were some questions. We had some questions about all those parking spaces. Are you going to address those? Because, uh-
Yes, under the conditional use permit, there are a series of conditions that regulate the activities on the site.
Okay. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Was it, is-
Hold on a second. What's your question? Please take the mic.
Is the tractor-trailer storage, is it accessory use or?
Tractor-trailer storage as under the, under warehouse distribution would be an accessory activity, but it could not be a primary use of the property. So, the property could not be used for the storage of trailers that are not associated with the operations that are ongoing. If they're associated, then, then accessory would be different. But a primary tractor-trailer storage would, would be struck from the, uh, the, uh, the choice of uses under the MXI.
So, the petitioners are good with the conditions and stipulations as outlined by-
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Could you say it in the mic for me?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Commissioner, go ahead with your motion.
Yeah, that is my motion, sir.
All right, is there a second?
A second motion. Hambrik.
Any questions?
I just have one quick question on that storage, though. What happens when these trucks are having to idle? You know, they have these E-logs now. And then we remove the storage. Because I know we have an issue with trucks idling on the side of a road.
Isn't that the part where you say if it's associated with the business, it's okay?
Okay, I got you.
Storing Ms., uh, Ms. Warner's trucks.
Well, trucking companies sound nice, but don't help.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Four, one, it passes.
Okay, nay, I'm sorry.
Three, two, it passes. And next.
The agenda item M, the third related case for the conditional use permit addressing the warehouse use, BOC 1910-0022. The applicant, John W. Jordan, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the warehouse distribution facility within the MXI district. The subject property is located at 2464 Mount Zion Road. Parcel ID is identified on the agenda. It's the, the conditional use permit occupies the same property, the 72 acres. There are enumerated conditions. Staff recommendation is to approve the property for a conditional use permit allowing, uh, a warehouse as a primary use and similar light manufacturing, assembly, storage, and distribution uses. The following conditions will, shall read as, "The site plan shall be limited to no more than 886,000 square feet for use as a warehouse distribution, as a, as a permitted primary use, incorporating similar light manufacturing, wholesale business offices, administrative offices, and tractor-trailer storage associated with warehousing, light manufacturing uses, other customary accessory uses such as assembly of products, of, of products that are stored with the permitted uses. The remaining of the portion of the parcel on the west side of Mount Zion, which is approximately 12 acres, shall remain undisturbed unless addressed in a later zoning modification petition." That was condition number one that I read that, that addressed the use of the property. Condition number two, "Provide a minimum 100-foot buffer, which would include 60 feet undisturbed and 40 feet disturbed but replanted along the east side of the property adjacent to residential zone property, as well as a 60-foot buffer that would incorporate 40 feet undisturbed, 20 feet disturbed and replanted along the north side of the property adjacent to the residential and agriculture zone property. Said disturbed buffer areas shall be replanted to buffer standards prior to the issuance of a CO for the development." Condition number three, "Provide access and road improvements subject to the approval of the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department in consideration of the DRI, development of regional impact findings that approved by the Atlanta Regional Commission. Condition number four, no outside storage of equipment shall be allowed. And condition number five affirms that this, the zoning action on this case, as approved, would not be based on the submitted site plan. Those are our five conditions under the conditional use permit that address the use within the MXI zoning that's been granted.
Now, Ms. Fang, one of the things when we talk about the no outside storage, kind of related to what Commissioner Warner said. If, if there's, when, it's some kind of e-commerce. If there's something that's just not, doesn't make sense to try to fit inside, you gotta ship it out the next day. That type of light, um, outside storage, we don't really have a problem with. Because there, you know, may be some situations like that.
And we're.
But not just, you know, bringing up boxes of everything just to sit outside. Not that type of storage.
The condition could be modified to state that any outside storage shall be screened and not be visible.
Okay.
That was one of the things we were gonna suggest. That was actually.
Say that for everybody here, Mr. Heck.
Uh, we're, we are fine with a stipulation or condition that outside storage be screened as, as staff has suggested.
So that would be a modification to condition number four to state no outside storage of equipment. No, outside storage of equipment shall be screened from view, from, from the right-of-way, from the public.
Right, no permanent outside storage. How about that, to add that word in as well?
Okay, no permanent outside storage.
And whatever outside storage is going to be screened, as Mr. Heck said.
We're, with the only, we're not sure when permanent versus temporary would take over. I'm not sure how that would be dealt with in terms of zoning enforcement. It usually is in process. Something comes out where it needs to be stored. It may be a few months where it goes out, but I, I don't know what that timeline is. It's just kind of a part of the process.
Are you clear on that, Commissioner Gregory?
Yeah, yeah, but, um, that's something we're gonna be watching. We're gonna pay close attention to it. Okay, I'm fine with it.
So I'll just restate that question if you don't mind. Condition number four will state that outside storage of equipment shall be screened from the public, from the public right-of-way or adjacent properties.
We, we agree with that.
And/or adjacent properties.
Okay, will you finish, Ms. Fang?
That concludes the five recommended conditions under the conditional use permit.
Mr. Heck.
Mr. Chairman, we just incorporate prior statements. Only thing we would note is just that the site plan calls for eight-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand six hundred square feet as opposed to just eight-eighty-six. And we would ask that to be put into the, into the permit.
All right, would you like to rebut, save any minutes for rebuttal?
Three minutes.
Got you. All right, anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Patricia Keen. What I forgot to say earlier is that, that this building, the size of it, if you want to see how large it looks, is that Castellini that was mentioned earlier on 42. This building is five times that size. Five times in a residential area. That's all.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
Don Sharp again, Lads Pull Over Drive. Again, uh, to the three commissioners who voted for this proposal, please pay attention to the seventy-some odd petitioners that are against this development. As, and you're talking about economic advantages of two hundred people. What about the seventy-five people who are presently there? Yes, there are tax advantages, but there's also other areas in Clayton County that are more suitable for this type of facility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Mr. Heck, did you have anything to add?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir. I just want to, just briefly, just repeat some of the things I, you know, I heard this before. People say, well, there's some empty warehouses here, but those empty warehouses are old. And we know we're living in this technological age now. We're all sitting at home ordering stuff online, especially during these times we just came out of the last couple of months. Again, one of the things I have always been for is trying to put our people to work. And I know there's a large part, portion of this population of Clayton County that these jobs were fit. Jobs that we could train people in a matter of weeks or months without waiting four years for college degrees and so forth, where they can advance, where they can be homeowners, where they can establish credit. And again, um, I, I understand, you know, situations like this. I just ask that the developers, to make sure, Ms. Fang, that you do have it down. That as these developers have promised, that they will work hand-in-hand with this community as they work to revitalize their community and with their needs, whatever they need and so forth. We were planning to have a meeting before the pandemic came along. One of the things I forgot to mention, also the Clayton County Public Schools, you know, they're adding their little, I don't know the official name of it, but their work-based learning program for those young people somewhat like our firefighters yesterday. Those young people who are not planning to go to a four-year college. So we, we just have a market here. We're on our way to the, to Savannah, the way to Savannah. Retail, we know brick-and-mortar retail is, you know, just dying down, especially in Clayton County. And as we work to continue to fund our police, our fire, our libraries, our parks and recreation, we do depend on the business community. But again, the main thing, I ask that this developer stick with this community and work with them to meet those needs that they are working on. One of the things I failed, I guess I can, we can go back, Ms. Fang, I failed to remember. Did you read out like the business license for the property? Only gonna be issued once those stipulations are met, right?
Uh, I can read that into the record, for that was under the, uh.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Chair, I, I offer a motion to approve this.
The, I just wanted to address that statement that that's, that would be an automatic process? The business license venture of it would have to be compliant with the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
With that, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
A second, Hambrick.
Any other questions or statements?
You approve it without a condition?
Yes. All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Next.
Agenda Item N, we have three related cases to be sounded, starting with the first case, BLC 1910-0026, a future land use plan amendment. The applicant DSP Acquisitions LLC is requesting a future land use plan amendment from mixed-use, mixed-use district to mixed-use commercial industrial MXI to allow for a warehouse distribution facility of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand square feet in area. The proposed location is at fifty-two, five-two-six Rock Hill Road and Highway eighty-five. The property ID is identified on the agenda. The property we're referencing is one-point-seven-seven acres of land, has two-hundred-and-twenty-six feet of frontage on Rock Hill Drive and a hundred-and-two-point-five feet of frontage along Highway eighty-five. Staff recommendation for, this is for approval. The zoning advisory group recommendations for approval.
All right, you on this one too, Mr. Heck?
I'm afraid, yeah.
All right, well, come on forward, come on forward.
Well, first two in about a year, but yes, it just happened to fall on this same date. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as you know, this is a one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot warehouse and distribution facility. It is, uh, you see the presentation before you, this is also resolving litigation matter, but you know this is along Rock Hill and Georgia eighty-five. You can see the presentation packet in terms of the pristine prior other projects that DSP has done before. You'll notice the location of it as well. You'll see the aerials of it. You'll see their fine works previously within the packet. You'll also see letters from two homeowners that are asking for this project to go through. I believe one of them is here. You will also see that one of the issues is a, is fencing. And we have proposed three different types of fences within this. I don't see that. This type or the other type that's within there. Thought I'd let you see this too. That will also buffer some. We are, um, asking for the condition of that screen be subject to the county's approval per this type of acoustic, what called acoustic fence that should help in terms of protecting from any issues. We are also noting that depending on the end user, it's planning for accommodating a hundred jobs, hopefully at this location. And we are asking for the, uh, asking for the county to make its motion with regard to these requests.
How many minutes for rebuttal?
I'll save three, Mr. Chairman.
Three. All right, anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in favor, please come forward, ma'am.
I'm gonna keep my mask on if that's all right. Good afternoon to you, Mr. Chairman, and all of the commissioners that are here today. My name is Eloise Person, and I live at five-eighty Rock Hill Drive. We have been going through this process now for over a year. I have been in favor of selling the property from the very beginning. Across the street in front of my house is already warehouses there. Our property was zoned for this type of, um, industrial situation. For the length of time that we've gone through it, I would like to say that my neighbor passed away, looking forward to selling his land. And so I would just ask the commissioners to please go on and approve it. We would like to move forward. I mean, I took a, a, a big chance even coming here today. I will be sixty-six years old in August. And with us being in a pandemic, it was that important to me to step out and say, I would like to sell my property. I would like to move on to something better. I don't know if the commissioners have been out in the area. It is basically a commercial area already. On Rock Hill Drive, there are only three houses that are being used, that are being utilized. And they are in very poor condition, and we are just ready to, you know, make this transition and just start enjoying our life. So I would ask you to please consider letting them go forward with this project. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Well, it might clarify a few things as to what we're looking at. There's some pictures of my home.
If you would, state your name, say.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jeffrey Edwards. I live at fifty-seven fifteen Highway eighty-five, Riverdale, Georgia. My sister Valerie Edwards also lives at the same address now that she's alone. And that is exactly about a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty feet from where this warehouse building is gonna be put in. I better start with, uh, do I have ten minutes?
No, six, you have, he's saving three minutes for rebuttal. So you have whatever you see up there.
What?
Yes, sir.
I thought I had ten minutes for, for the.
Other people was talking, they're, well, was he the first one? No, he's the second one. So the time starts down from, from ten minutes. And we're wasting time now.
But I, but I'm in opposition. That's what you said.
And you got ten minutes for everybody to speak. For everybody in opposition to speak.
Well, they weren't in opposition.
Excuse me?
They weren't in opposition. I'm the only one in opposition.
Well, we started at seven minutes. The rebuttal is for three minutes. No, no, you get ten minutes.
I get ten minutes.
Did we not start the clock on, right?
Yeah, so I get ten minutes.
Should be ten minutes for rebuttal.
No, three minutes for rebuttal.
I'm sorry, ten minutes for opposition.
People in opposition are ten minutes, and I don't get any rebuttal.
Okay, sir, calm down.
I'm sorry, you'll have to excuse me. I'm freaking out about this.
No, we're gonna get it right. Okay, go ahead, we got you. We apologize.
Since I have only a few minutes, I can only touch on the worst parts of this project, but there are many more that need to be considered. I've only known about this project being reconsidered after being voted down last December for a little over two weeks. But the first time I saw the proposed building layout last year, I knew it was gonna be a disaster for my sister and me if it wasn't changed. As drawn, the dock doors and truck and trailer parking are on my side of the building, not the Rock Hill Drive side of the building. Since my home is only a little over a hundred feet from the property line, I'm going to be subjected day and night to all the noise of the truck traffic, diesel engines idling overnight, trucks dropping trailers, which sounds like a cannon going off, and worst of all, the blare of backup beepers from trucks and forklifts. At several of the meetings we had last year, I had proposed that the building should be turned around so that the dock doors and truck and trailer parking are on the Rock Hill Drive side of the building. That way, there is more distance between my home and the truck noise, and the building itself would help block the noise. The truckers would like it better because they can come straight into the warehouse from Highway eighty-five instead of having to climb Rock Hill Drive and come in a driveway at the top next to the Premier Garden Apartments and maneuver into the back. At first, I was told that there was a county ordinance against trucks in the front of a building. I suggested that they could get an exception since you wouldn't be spoiling the looks of Rock Hill Drive. They then said that the slope of the lot was wrong for doing that. As it is, they're going to spend a huge amount of money flattening off that hill enough to put that building on. I don't see why they can't make it a little flatter. To date, the only thing that has been put in writing is putting a six-foot privacy fence on top of a retaining wall that I had asked for since my backyard would be open to anyone. At a meeting last year with Mr. Higgy of the Community Development Office, he proposed changing the fence to a sound-absorbing wall to try and lessen the truck noise and the blare of the backup beepers. Unless they can get some technology from the little green spacemen, it's not gonna work. The problem is that if you can hear the backup beepers at all in the house, at night, they sound just like an alarm clock going off, and it would wake us up. Next, I propose that the hours of operation should be during the day only so that there wouldn't be any truck traffic at night. They said they couldn't agree to that since they didn't know the requirements of their tenants. At this time, they've said that they have no one ready to move into this facility. My question about what is the occupancy of the existing warehousing in the industrial park on the other side of Rock Hill Drive and in the nearby industrial parks has not been answered. Is this facility really needed? Or is it speculation on a perceived future? Is this facility really needed, or is it speculation on a perceived future need? A few days ago, I drove down Highway 85 to the three closest industrial parks to see how much space was available. The first park, which is just on the other side of Rock Hill Drive from the proposed warehouse site, had a large sign on Highway 85 saying they had 76,000 square feet available in a building that would be almost across the street from the proposed warehouse. The next two industrial parks were about a quarter mile away. In driving through them, I saw plenty of signs that said space in the buildings was available. A lot of the signs did not tell how much space was available, so I only counted the ones that did say how much vacant space was for lease. In one of the industrial parks, there was 84,000 square feet available, and in the other park, there was 349,000 square feet available, for a total of at least 510,000 square feet of warehouse space available for lease within a quarter mile of this proposed warehouse. All the signs look like they had been up for a while, and since you have this much space available at a time when the economy has been going like gangbusters for the last two or three years, it tells me that there is already an oversupply of warehouse space and that none extra is needed, especially since they've already said that they don't have anyone ready to move into this proposed warehouse. As I was driving around looking at warehousing in different places, I noticed that they all had certain common characteristics that this proposed warehouse does not have. First, they are all built on flat, level land instead of the side of a hill. Second, because they're on flat, level land, trucks have easy access to the warehouses and to the roads. But the one characteristic that they all had was that not one of them was built next to an apartment complex or right next to anyone's home. They were all out by themselves where they bothered no one. There are other projects that would be better suited to the topography, the land, and the needs of the community. Before the real estate bust in 2008, the company was going to take this property, my property and the property next to me, and build a senior citizen community similar to the villages complex in Florida. There were going to be apartment towers and cluster homes, a recreation complex, a medical facility, and most of all, a transportation center so the residents could do their shopping without having to drive a car. Unfortunately, with the real estate bust, that project went by the wayside. So far, I have touched only on some of the problems we will face during the operation phase of the project. The long construction phase has many big unanswered questions also. Just like the noise from operation, the noise of construction for me, my sister, and the residents of the Premier Garden Apartments would be impossible to live with. Bulldozers and dump trucks and other construction equipment almost right next to the house. There would be no privacy, no security, and no sleep. And then there is the blasting that is scheduled to be done. I'm told that I will be notified each time they will blast. I guess I'm supposed to gather up my pets and my sister and I evacuate our home all because of their project. I'm assured that if the blasting damages my property, that they will fix it, but like everything else, nothing's in writing. The residents of the Premier Garden Apartments will also get their share of blasting. Another unanswered construction problem is that when they start clearing pine trees from their property, they could start an infestation of pine bark beetles that could come onto my property and kill every pine tree on my place. Any county agricultural agent will tell you that you don't mess with pine trees when it's warm. Even a broken limb from a thunderstorm can be enough to start them, and when started, the only two things that will stop them is they run out of trees to kill or cold weather sets in. I have some, I have some very large, very valuable trees, as you can see by the photos I brought, that could be as old as 200 years. If the trees are killed and removed, my home would look like a moonscape, and who would pay for the trees and their removal? You're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. Every time I ask this question, it's like no one hears me. At some of the meetings, the question has been asked, why is Mr. Edwards opposed to this project? After all, his property is zoned heavy industrial too. My property is zoned heavy industrial because someone at the county deemed the entire area heavy industrial, not knowing there was an occupied home there. There were no notices, no meetings, no letters. The only way I learned of the zoning change was when I got my tax bill and my taxes had doubled. I should have been grandfathered in and my zoning kept residential. If that had happened like it should have, I wouldn't be here right now fighting for my home, my property, and my and my sister's quality of life, which will surely be taken from us through no fault of our own. It was my understanding at the meeting in December that something would be done after the first of the year about changing some of the zoning back from industrial to residential. Since we're here now, I guess that hasn't been done yet. If the roles were, if the roles were reversed and their warehouse had been in operation for 70 years, and I came to them and said that I was gonna buy the lot next door and build my house right next to their warehouse, and they needed to make some changes, first they couldn't operate their warehouse except between the hours of 11 o'clock in the morning till 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and absolutely never at night. Also, no lights were to be left on at night and no truck parking. I would think of some other things, but that would be good enough to start with. Among the things that they would tell me that I could do with my house would be that I needed to find another piece of land more suited to a house instead of trying to put one next to an existing commercial property.
Sir, your time is up now. You took the 10 minutes like you really needed it, so, but your time is up, sir. Thank you.
That was 10 minutes?
Yes, sir. Mr. Heck, anything in rebuttal? Sir, your pictures.
First, I'm calling our engineer, Mr. Wesley Reed.
Three minutes, Jason.
Wesley Reed with Everlyne Associates. A couple of the points I'd like to address. One is the request to have a front-loading building where the truck court would face Rock Hill. We did look at this option, and because of the grades on Rock Hill and trying to get access, we were not able to do that. Autos can traverse a steeper grade than trucks can, and so that's the reason the building is configured as it is. And the other is about the warehouse space that is available and that the ceiling heights that this will be built with are to the specs that users want today, and a lot of the other space around there does not have the same ceiling heights that the users are requesting, so.
I would just say, it is consistent with the zone, it is consistent with the zoning in that area. Also, the acousta fence is for that purpose, to try and shelter from sound, and in addition, it is, the, the, the request is to be inconsistent with what we believe staff and the district commissioner have desired, so we are requesting that 180,300 square feet with a condition where the acousta fence, as approved by the county, is allowed to buffer.
All right, Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, if Mr. Fan would read those conditions, I think which should include the fencing, is that the fencing and buffer and an exit route? And I guess we could get to that later, exit routes for the trucks and all coming in and out? And anyway, if we could get those conditions read, please.
The conditions are, there are...
Madeline, this is only on the future land.
There are four recommended conditions, but they go with the next companion case under the rezoning. The sounding on this would be for the future land use plan amendment, changing the property from, from mixed use to MXI for the corner piece that's where the gas station is located. It's only a small parcel that needed a land use plan amendment to be consistent with the overall development. So we're on agenda item number N, and there are no conditions. Staff recommendations for approval and ZAG recommendations for approval on the land plan amendment.
With that being said, I move to approve the land, the future land use plan.
Is there a second? Hold on a second.
Let me just make a correction in terms of the, the area that's been, being addressed here. The future land use plan amendment would be for the entire properties, that are seven parcels altogether. They are outlined in yellow. That would make all the zoning, all the plan designations consistent under the MXI.
Yeah, for a hundred, 180, that's for the...
Okay, is that correct? All right, Commissioner.
Oh, okay, well, I move to approve the future land use plan.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved and second, any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, it's unanimous. Next.
Agenda item O, companion case, BOC 19100024, the rezoning app. The applicant DSP Acquisition LLC is requesting a rezoning of parcels from heavy industrial and general business to light industrial to allow for a warehouse distribution facility of 180,300 square feet in area. The subject properties are located on 526, 540, 580, and 590 Rock Hill Road, also 5695 Highway 85 and the unaddressed parcel adjacent on Highway 85. The parcel IDs are identified on your agenda. The subject properties are consistent on 12.6 acres of land and for a total of 226 feet of frontage on Rock Hill Drive and 102.5 feet of frontage along Highway 85. The staff recommendation is for approval conditional. There are conditions listed, and there is, the conditions are, address the combination. The following parcels are to be combined, and I'll read out the parcels so to be clear to the record, that the seven parcels that, that's identified in the plan map there will be combined for one, one development piece. And that's the combined parcels, 13086C, A004, second parcel, 13086C, A002, third parcel, 13086C, A007, fourth parcel, 13086C, A001, the fifth parcel being 13086C, A005, sixth parcel, 13086C, A002, the seventh parcel, 13086C, A006, for a total of 12.6 acres of land to be, to be recorded, to be combined and legally recorded as one lot. That was condition number one. Condition number two, that the warehouse be limited to a, a maximum square footage of 180,000 square feet and 300, 180,000 square feet, the 300 square feet, the development to be in the primary structure. Condition number three, provide along the south property line a six-foot high privacy fence in conjunction with a retaining wall proposed to, proposed to provide screening from the adjacent residentially used property. The proposed screening shall meet the approval of the adjacent property owner. The adjacent property owner. Condition number, number four, that the property is limited to the approved, the site plan submitted on today's application showing access to be provided from Rock Hill Drive only. Those are the four recommended conditions, and I'll state that the property, the staff recommendation is suggesting a change recommendation. The application when first heard was, was for, for light industrial. The staff recommendation now is that this property be considered for warehousing for the warehouse district, that's the new district that was approved last year. The warehousing district being different from the light industrial district in that it only allows primarily warehousing and related truck activity and, and light assembly. So staff recommendation is for warehouse zoning on this property with the four conditions sounded.
Mr. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The, we're fine with the recommendations of the staff commissioner with just one small change. We have presented the acousta fence, which is supposed to help with the sound barrier. We'd ask for one of those three models to be approved by the county. We're not sure that you can delegate a county function to a private individual in terms of approval on a zoning process, so that's the only change we would have.
You note take that.
You referring to condition number three?
The, the fence with regard to the adjacent, we're asking for the county's approval with regard to this acousta fence models we submitted.
I'll wait for a motion from the, from the board.
Okay, did you have anything in addition?
No, just, I'll clarify the four conditions after the Commissioner makes her statements.
Okay, Mr. Heck, anything?
No, we just incorporate what we said in our, in the last hearing.
Three minutes for rebuttal.
Three minutes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anybody want to speak in favor of the requests? Anybody in favor of the requests? Anybody in opposition? Come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Dawson. I live at Rock Show's Way in Pine Show Subdivision, and I'm a little confused as to where this site is. You keep saying Jonesboro, you keep saying Rock Hill. I live off Rock Hill, but it's not Jonesboro. So exactly where is this?
Was, did you, somebody misspeak?
The property is located at the corner of Rock Hill and Highway 85.
Rock Hill, is that near the Hindu church?
Yes, it's just north of the, the temple.
Okay, all right, that's where I live. And I oppose, very, very, very deeply oppose, because that area, we moved into that area about 20 something years ago, yes, we got a house for you guys, nice, nice subdivision, we were getting together, then Fulton County let in the fifth runway. Ms. Hamburg, don't worry about it, it's gonna be okay. Then, just where they're trying to be, they let in a warehouse with the trucks, and I agree with that gentleman back there. You and the trucks gonna fight on this one and a half-lane street. Your life is in danger all the time, and yes, there is a crazy hill there. After that, right cross from there, Flat Show's Rock Hill Way, they let in a dumpster. It's okay, it's not trash. It's trash, it's a dumpster, that whole land over there, as big as what they're trying to put there, is a landfill. You have been dumping on that area for 20-plus years, and you want us to be a community? You want us to get together and make things better, but you keep dumping on us? And I'm a little more than the lady up there, I'm 70, and I've been in the military, it was not this bad. But you continuously, Clayton County, keep beating up on the little people that are trying to do better. These kids can go to school somewhere, they can learn, you need to let the parents go be parents again and get those kids to stay in regular school. You don't have to employ these people to give you 250 jobs, but you're kinda like beating up on the people that are there surviving for big businesses, and like I've been hearing is that you don't even know what's gonna be there. But I'm living next door, where's the gentleman that said they bum up the, listen for the, the bombs to go off, the land blowing up and stuff like that every day. The house is uneven because the land shakes every time they blow up an explosion over there, and it ain't, it ain't even 100 yards. It may be the size of a, maybe a football field and a half, that's how close they are to me. And I'm looking at this, and the yay, I approve of it, you should say, no, 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 And I'm looking at this, and the yay, I approve of it, you should say, no, 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 no. Let's, let's let these people alone for a minute. You go back and you look and you see all those times that you have hit that area up there. Lots of times, you may not have even been in office, but a lot of times you have hit that same area, bombarded with this, tore down this, built right up under their nose. The people across the street from me are right at the door. Eight-foot wall, last time I checked.
Ma'am, speak up.
Last time I checked, eight feet don't stop no sound from nothing. It travels in the air. That's not gonna stop the sound. And that area has had a lot, a lot of stuff being done to them in the name of progress. Please, I voted down for the people you all were talking about before, that other group, I don't know where they live, Creek something. I didn't like that, because that establishment is building up right behind their house too. They work, they pay their dues, they got a place to stay. And what happens? In the world of progress, you come along and you tear that up for them. That area, north eighty-five, they've had too much, y'all should think about it.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
finishing up what I had to say. My name is Jeff Edwards again. If the roles were reversed, and their warehouse had been in operation for seventy years, and I came to them and said that I was going to buy the lot next door and build my house right next to their warehouse, and they needed to make some changes. First, they couldn't, they couldn't operate their warehouse except between hours eleven o'clock in the morning until four o'clock in the afternoon, and absolutely never at night. Also, no light for it to be left on at night, and no truck parking. I would think of some of the other things, but that was a good place to start. Among the things that they would tell me that I could do with my house would be that I needed to find another piece of land more suited for a house instead of trying to put one next to an operating commercial building, and expecting them to change for me. After all, they were there first. This project, the way it's designed now, is going to destroy the quality of life for my sister and me, and it's going to impact the lives of the residents of the Premier Garden Apartments. This project will create a situation where it will be impossible for my sister and me to live in our own home that I have lived in for the past seventy years. We should not have to suffer not one thing from their project, because we were here first. And that's the other thing I wanted to point out. Every last one of the people that are involved with this project doesn't live around here. Some of them are in Chicago, some of them are across town, and not one single person is gonna be inconvenienced in the least by their warehouse project. Where is it written that I and my sister are the ones that are supposed to take the brunt of their project? That's not fair. We were here first. They should be bending over backwards to make it okay for us, for them to put their warehouse in. And the other thing, of course, is, we wouldn't be in this mess if the county hadn't deemed all this heavy industrial, including my house, which was supposed to have gotten fixed back to residential, is what my understanding was, but that hasn't happened. So, I'm a victim of other people's doings. And I don't understand why it is we've got to suffer financial losses, the, the loss of our home, the loss of our quality of life, just so they can put in a warehouse right next door, just because they can. It's just because it's gonna be zoned that way, so we can do it. And what do they care? They're not gonna have to put up with it. They're not gonna lose one fraction of a second of sleep. They're not gonna be inconvenienced in the least. Every last one of them are gonna go back to their nice little, uh, quiet homes and their nice little quiet neighborhoods, and not have to worry about somebody or some big corporation putting a warehouse right next door to them. Now, this is just not right. Now, this thing got voted down in December, and now it's back. It's like Frankenstein's monster. It will not die. And I'm just getting sick and tired of it. I have lost too much sleep and everything else since this thing has started. And I thought once in December, it was finally gone, it was gone, until two weeks ago when I got the, the letter saying it was back on the agenda, and now it started back again. And I'm getting tired of waking up at four o'clock in the morning, bathed in sweat, looking at the ceiling with my heart pounding, and knowing, you know, I could be listening to a truck engine right now. But, you know, and it's coming, I know. Please, please vote this thing down. They can take their warehouse and go someplace else and find a nice piece of land that is a lot better for what they want, than trying to stick it on the side of a granite mountain. And that's exactly what Rock Hill Drive is. I know, because I've lived there all my life. Please vote this thing down. Thank you.
Anybody else in opposition of? Mr. Heck, do you have anything?
We would just say that you have letters from two families that are asking for this to go through, as well as others that have also requested it. You have a consistency with the land use there, and you have the Acusta fence that is trying to limit the impact, uh, impact from a project generate a hundred jobs or more for the county in a time wherein it could be an economic generator. So, with that, we'd ask for the approval with that one change and that one condition.
Commissioner Hambury.
I, I did, I asked for it with the approval by the county of the fencing.
Commissioner Hambury.
Uh, yes. As Mr. Edwards has stated, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this project was turned down in December of twenty nineteen. Since that time, a lawsuit was filed. But not just because of the lawsuit being filed, but after taking a second look at this and thinking that HI, or heavy industrial, anything could be dumped on us. And meeting with Mr. Heck, Jack Hancock, Chuck, and the attorney from DSP, we worked out a plan, where it would be something that would be more in tune of what Clayton County would be proud of. Uh, it's off of Highway eighty-five, there were some things discussed, and I believe we've covered all those in the conditions. We had a fourth condition that's not on my agenda, but the fourth one was regarding the exit from the project. Instead of going out on Highway eighty-five, we would exit out and come back around to, uh, a project that's already there, Prologis, that has warehouses and all. So, they're right next door, really. So, my thing is, if the company has agreed with the fencing and a buffer, the exit, and also jobs for our citizens, again, as Commissioner Gregory said, you know, that's the thing that we talk about all the time, for economic development and all, and we want our citizens working, and all. This is a very nice project, we're gonna watch it and make sure that it looks like the plan. And Commissioner Warner, it won't be something else, you know, we get these beautiful plans and all, then something else comes in. So, we will be watching, and I, I truly believe that this project is gonna come out just the way the pictures are and all. I, I would like to mention this, and I'm sure the company would do this, the business, as far as trash and cleanup and all, that we will keep this facility nice and clean and beautiful. Uh, that, that's not in the stipulations or whatever, but I'm just gonna trust that the company will do this and fulfill that, as I've called, an obligation and all. But with all that being considered and all, and working with the company and the company being willing to work with us, aside from the lawsuit and all, I recommend approval.
With, uh...
Let's get Madeline to read the conditions.
Right, and, and the consideration of condition number three, Commissioner?
Yes.
Where the, the type of fencing is being addressed? Are there any modifications?
Yeah, please read three and four.
Okay, I'll also...
Read them all.
I'll read them all. Again, the recommended conditions for the rezoning to warehouse zoning district will include condition number one, I won't read all the parcel numbers. Condition number one states that the seven parcels identified shall be combined into one legal parcel ID and recorded. Condition number two limits the use of the property to a warehouse at a hundred and eighty thousand and three hundred square feet for the primary structure. Condition number three states, provide along the south property line, a six-foot privacy fence in conjunction with the retaining wall, proposed in order to provide screening from the adjacent residentially used property. The proposed screening shall be subject to the approval of the Community and Development Department. And condition number four states that the, the property, property should be limited to the site plan submitted and as approved for access by the Transportation and Development Department.
Okay, is there a mention of the exit?
The, the plan indicates that the access shall be from, from Rock Hill, I'll just state that in the condition, that's subject to the, consistent with the site plan submitted by the applicant, showing access to Rock Hill Road as approved by the Transportation and Development Division, the access shall be provided as such.
Okay, now, does that mean not exiting out on eighty-five? I'm not clear on that one.
Right, and I can add a statement, no access allowed to Highway eighty-five. No, no direct access allowed from the property to Highway eighty-five.
Uh, right, is that, is that okay, Mr. Heck? Because I, I don't think anybody would exit eighty-five heading north. Um, if they are heading south, which I doubt, I think everybody exiting out there would be headed north, is that correct?
Speaking to Mike, please, sir.
If we're talking about exiting the facility, I think that's fine. They would, what's that?
For, for trucks.
Why don't you address, Mr. Engineer?
The idea is that trucks will not be able to exit to the east on Rock Hill to eighty-five. They would have to take a left out of the truck drive. Autos would still be able to take a right to go right on eighty-five. But trucks would have to make a left on Rock Hill to go around back to eighty-five.
State your name again for us.
Wesley Reed with Everland Associates.
Okay, have provisions been made, Madeline, or, Mr. Heck, that exit out of, I mean, onto Rock Hill, back around to the, what is that called? That warehouse boulevard or something where Prologis is?
I, I think on Rock Hill Drive, it's just a left turn, isn't it? They, they have to go left, I think they have to go left out of it, isn't that right? They, when they're exiting, they can't go back to the right towards eighty-five, they've gotta go left towards, I think it's Wesley's Mill.
That's correct.
Okay, is that, is that clear in the conditions, Ms. Pam?
They're talking through it, Commissioner. Her question was, is it clear in the conditions?
The, they, no, the condition does not address the route in which the trucks will be, will, will take once they leave the site. The condition only addresses the fact that access will only be from Rock Hill. The, um, the direction, of course, is, would be an off-site, would be an off-site venture, so the, the conditions only address what's, what pertains to the property. But the applicant has indicated that the traffic route would be going left and not right onto Highway eighty-five, but that is not included in the condition, because it's an off-site, off-site movement.
Uh, Chuck, I need some clarity on that one. We had a meeting, and to pop that.
Uh, Commissioner, the site plan that was submitted shows, is engineered so that trucks will not be making a right onto Rock Hill Drive. And that was one of the conditions that was approved by Transportation and Development, so that when trucks come out of the property, the subject property, it will make a left onto Rock Hill Drive.
Okay, okay, I just wanna be sure that's in writing, because that, that would definitely be a safety issue, trying to exit out and make a left onto eighty-five. Okay, so, when they exit out, they have to exit out left on Rock Hill, is that correct?
Yes. That's correct.
I can add that statement, that trucks, truck traffic shall, shall exit to the left onto Rock Hill Drive.
And that was covered in your condition about the site plan approved by Transportation and Development.
So, I believe it is covered, Commissioner.
Okay, with, with that being said and the conditions being read, I, um, offer a motion to approve this project.
With the stipulations?
Yes, with the, with the conditions, yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, it's unanimous, next.
The final item, also a related case with a different recommendation. This case number is BOC 1910-0025. This would, a request for a conditional use permit. The applicant DSP Acquisitions LLC is requesting a conditional use permit on property zone light industrial, well, in this case, property zone warehouse industrial as, as preceded in the earlier case, for the warehouse distribution facility for one hundred and eighty thousand and three hundred square feet of area. The property, subject property has the same address as the, the seven lots sounded before, being at 526, 540, 580, 590 Rock Hill, 569, 5695 Highway eighty-five, and adjacent parcel, unaddressed parcel, also along Highway eighty-five. The subject property makes up twelve point six acres of land, with seven hundred and twenty-six feet of frontage on Rock Hill Drive, and a hundred and two point five feet of frontage along Highway eighty-five. The, um, this conditional use permit request, staff recommendation is for withdrawal of this, this conditional use permit. The previous action rezoning the property to warehouse district alleviates the, the need for this conditional use permit. The conditional use permit would only have been needed under the HI or LI zoning. Under the warehouse zoning, warehouse is, is a permitted use outright, so therefore, this conditional use permit is not required, is not needed. So, staff recommendation is that this, that the CUP be, be withdrawn.
And Mr. Heck, you are in agreeance with us withdrawing.
We're in agreement with you, Chair.
Commissioner Hambury, you will make the motion.
Uh, yes, I make a motion to approve.
No, to withdraw. It's not needed, so we're just gonna withdraw it.
We, we're fine with withdrawing it, the warehouse zoning covers.
So, just make a motion to withdraw the applicant, the request.
Okay, I make a motion to withdraw the request.
Is there a second? I'll second, I'll second the motion. Any questions? Hearing now, those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chairman, we need an executive session on real estate and personnel.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate and personnel, is there a second? Second.
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Davis, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody have a good night. All right, motion to reconvene.
Motion.
I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. All right. Ms. Ambles.
Uh, pursuant to Silver Service Rule 5 dot 201, on behalf of Transportation and Development, Human Resources is requesting to hire a public works engineer at grade thirty-two, step eleven, at a total compensation of a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second? Second. Uh, Commissioner Hambury made the motion, Commissioner Davis seconded the motion, any questions? Hearing now, those in, oh, go ahead.
Abstain for cause, I was not able to sign in to hear that.
Say again.
Abstaining for cause, when the vote comes in, I was not able to hear that.
Okay. All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstain.
And one abstain, uh, one abstention. So, it passes four with one abstention.
Okay, and the last one, Human Resources has, on behalf of probate court, Human Resources is requesting two reclassification for the licensing supervisor, the current grade and step is forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars, with a total comp of sixty-three, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We're proposing the new compensation to be, uh, grade twenty-seven, step one, salary would be fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, for a total comp of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, that is a difference of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. We're also requesting a classification, uh, for the estate supervisor, current grade and step is twenty-one thousand, with a salary of forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, total compensation is sixty thousand, five hundred and eleven. We're proposing, uh, grade twenty-seven, step one, salary fifty-eight thousand, five, uh, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, I'll repeat that, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, total compensation seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, for a difference of eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
And the total amount of that request is?
Uh, the total request is, hold on one second.
The impact is thirty-five.
Thirty-one.
It's on the top there somewhere.
And I apologize, you all, I was on the road there for a moment. Thank you, the, uh, total cost is thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy, seventeen dollars, total cost thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars.
All right, so, uh, Judge Ferguson is making this request to adjust the pay of two supervisors who are actually supervising personnel who actually makes more money than the supervisors. So, with that in accuracy, I, I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moves and second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you. No further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I'll second, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous, good night.